Okay, good morning, everybody. And it's been a trend, but I will say it one more time. For one last time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Folks, I already know I'm not going to make it through the day very well. It's December 15th, 2022. This is regular meeting of the Gainesville City Commission. Our first order of business today is an invocation. We are pleased to have Dr. Reverend Marie Herring from Dayspring Missionary Baptist with us. Thank you so much, Dr. Herring, for joining us this morning.
Thank you so much. Let us bow our heads. Eternal God, as we embark upon these winter holidays, help us to focus on family and friends as we enjoy their fellowship and love. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Eternal God, we ask that you remind them that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages, you've been called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant our commissioners and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently when it's time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Dr. Herring. All right, Madam Clerk?
We'll have the adoption of the agenda with the following updates to the consent agenda. Item number 202022-18, interim city auditor employment agreement. This item was added.
Yes, thank you. I was able to have a good conversation with Ms. Anderson, our interim auditor, and we came to an agreement with the contract that you see in your backup, but we didn't have that discussion until Monday. So thank you for getting that added. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull 2022797, Lot 10, to regular agenda, please, for discussion.
Okay. So is that a motion to approve with those two modifications?
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion in a second that we approve our agenda, adding the auditor contract and pulling Lot 10 to the regular agenda. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Where are we putting the Lot 10?
We can do it this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, we have time on the agenda. Okay. With that, any members of the public sign up to speak to any consent items?
Nathan Scott?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Nathan Scott. So with respect to the adoption of the consent agenda, and I believe the regular agenda also, or do we split them still?
It's one vote.
Okay. All right. So you misspoke then because you said consent agenda.
Well, you can speak to items on the regular agenda when they come up.
Understood. So with respect to the adoption of the items on the consent agenda, I would also concur with removing Lot 10. You guys do this just as, it's about as whimsical as you guys wearing masks for TV one day and not wearing them like the other, but the parameters have changed. I think it warrants a discussion. It's disappointing that the commission would just want to put something on the consent agenda while no one's looking that materially alters the terms of what the commission sought to see from the development, very similar to the Greck when they came in for a change of law that you nodded in approval of, Mayor Poe. So I think these items, when there is amendment, need to be discussed openly and transparently. They may have merit, they may warrant approval of the commission, but to sit there and slide them under the carpet like you guys do repeatedly on items on the consent agenda, I don't think is appropriate. Also, too, with respect to the adoption of the regular agenda, I would ask that they remove the ordinance regarding the commissioner salary changes. You guys came out of the blue, did this on a whim. It's abuse of power. It's absolute power corrupts. You have all these strategic plans, policy initiatives, funding priorities for those that you discussed ad nauseam. So there's a whole laundry list of things you want to do in the city that aren't funded, yet you invent cash to the tune of $400,000 of taxpayer money to give you guys that supersedes all those priorities, supersedes all those priorities, Mayor Poe. Allocation of scarce resources, you guys don't care because you're feeding at the trough like a bunch of little pigs. You have 5,600 GRU customers, 5,600-plus GRU customers, that don't have their electric bills.
Mr. Scott, you can talk about this.
I am talking, I am talking.
This may be items on the consent agenda.
Please, please, please.
Those items are not on the consent agenda.
They are. Stop, Mayor Poe, stop interrupting me because you don't like some of your remarks.
GRU is not on the consent agenda.
I'm speaking to removing your salary.
That's on the regular agenda. You can speak at that time.
No, we're talking about the adoption, the consent, and the regular agenda is one item. That's what's on here, the adoption of the agenda. So please don't correct me. I think I know the rules better than you do. You just don't like the content of my speech. So the bottom line here, Mayor Poe, is you guys want to give yourself double your salary on top of the $9.6 per cent raise.
That item is on our regular agenda, you can speak at that time.
I will, and, but I'm saying it should be removed from the agenda because it's inappropriate, it's abuse of power, you guys do a terrible job, you got GRU customers that...
You're welcome to speak about that when it comes up at regular agenda.
Okay, I will, trust me.
Madam Clerk?
Debbie Martinez. So I'm correct to understand that you did remove Lot 10 from the consent agenda?
That's the motion, we haven't voted on yet.
Oh, okay, well, okay. Thank you for the clarification and your politeness. Okay, I'd like to request, boy, 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 boy. I'm trying to be sweet today since this is your last day, but I wish you would just be a little patient with the citizens as well. If you would please remove the first item on the consent agenda, 2022744, acquisition of conservation lands adjacent to Lob Lallywood, postpone it, not pull it, I stand corrected. I shouldn't let you throw me off, Poe, but you do that to so many of us. If you would postpone that till the new commission comes on in January, that would be greatly appreciated. And also, if you would, I ask that you pull items 2022-790 and 2022-792, both pre-trial settlements, for $100,000 for two separate individuals, because there's no backup on the agenda offering an explanation. For transparency, please pull these two items and explain to taxpayers why the money should be spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anybody else for consent? No?
Consent.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent and regular agenda with two modifications. On the favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes, one, two, three, five, one, with Sacco absent and Ariel in dissent. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We'll have early public comment.
Okay, anybody sign up for early public comment on any items?
Nathan Scott.
Go ahead, Mr. George.
Okay, then on to general public comment.
That's one o'clock.
Oh, that's, yeah, that should be at one. That's a misprint on the agenda. Oh, no, it's not, no, it's not. I'm sorry, I just skipped to the wrong page. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Wait, early public comments now or at 1:00? I mean, I mean, regular, regular public comment.
At 1:00.
Thank you.
The next item is item number 2022-71, FY21 audited financial statements, the independent auditors' report, and annual audit governance letters.
Okay, thank you. Before we do that, Commissioner Ariel, I mean Commissioners, hey, Santos?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to modify our agenda and place general public comment, item F, at 1:00.
Yeah, that's just a misprint on the agenda.
And also add early public comment at 1:00 as well.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion passes unanimously. Apologize for the misprint there. Okay, up next, Madam Clerk.
The next item is item number 2022-71, FY21 audited financial statements, independent auditors' report, and annual audit governance letters. The recommendation is that the audit committee, the audit committee recommends that the city commission accepts the general government audited financial statements, independent auditors' reports, and annual governance letters.
Okay, thank you. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, on December 13th, the audit committee met at 3:00. They heard this item, the fiscal year 2021 financial audit. That item was approved and recommended to be discussed today at the full commission. Ms. Barbara Boyd with Purvis Gray is available remotely to present this item since Purvis Gray actually did the audit.
Thank you. And Ms. Boyd, welcome, and also we were pleased to have Commissioner Chestnut join us for that meeting as well. And so with that, we'll recognize Ms. Boyd.
Hi, good morning. Barbara Boyd with Purvis Gray Company and partner in charge of the audit engagement. The slides currently up are for Ms. Wong's presentation. Could we get the Purvis Gray slides?
Yeah, we'll switch them out, Ms. Boyd, thanks. Just give us one second. We're on it, Ms. Boyd, we're just getting the other presentations loaded up.
Are they, I'm sorry, I have trouble hearing. Are they coming up or?
No, you're not missing anything. We're just sitting here in silence waiting for it to be found. Normally, I'd use this time to tell some dad jokes, but I'm going to spare everybody on my last meeting. Madam Clerk, do you want us to take a brief recess? Yeah, okay. Ms. Boyd, bear with us, we're going to take a brief recess so we can get this presentation found, and we'll be right back with you. So we'll be in recess for a moment. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. I believe we have the presentation ready. Ms. Boyd, you are still with us.
All right, perfect.
All right.
All right, so I am here to present the results of the fiscal year 21 audit for the city of Gainesville, and that comprises several audits. There's five of them altogether. First, the largest being the annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFER, but also the Wild Spaces and Public Places Funds, the employees' pension plan, the consolidated police officers' and firefighters' retirement plan, and the retiree health insurance program. So on the next slide is the summary of the results of the audit, audits. Yep, there you go. So the first item on that slide is the auditor's opinion on the financial statements and notes. So you can see that you received an unmodified or a clean opinion on all five reports. And so what that means is that based on the testing that we performed and the evidence that we gathered, we concluded that your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. We also conduct an examination with, on your compliance with Florida statute 218415, which is the local government investment statute, and we concluded that the city complied in all material respects with that statute as well. The next item on there is the report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters required to be reported under government auditing standards. So when we conduct an audit, we do review your internal controls, we look at processes and procedures to help us mainly assess the risks and where to focus our resources. But as part of that process, if we, we're back on the previous slide, if we identify any control deficiencies that we consider to be significant deficiencies or material weakness, weaknesses, we would report them to you in this report. So we did have some material weaknesses and significant deficiencies that we identified. We'll talk about those when we get to the next slide. In your ACFER, there's also a report on compliance with major programs. You did have about $30 million in federal and state grants this year. Anytime you have over $750,000 in either, you're required to get a single audit. So we had three major, three major federal programs and three major state projects that we audited, and what that means is that we dig in a little deeper, we look at the direct and material compliance requirements with each major program that's selected. We issue an opinion on compliance, and we also review your internal controls over compliance. So you did have an unmodified opinion on the single audit, and we also had no findings relative to the major federal programs or the major state projects, and no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that we reported on internal controls over compliance. Finally, we issue a management letter in accordance with Chapter 10550, the rules of the auditor general. In that report, there's certain information that the auditor general requires us to include, but the main thing I want to highlight that would be included in the management letter is if there are any control deficiencies or non-compliance that are more immaterial in nature, don't rise to the level of a significant deficiency or a material weakness, those would be included in this management letter. So we do have one item that we identified, item 2021-04, and it's regarding the reconciliation of building permits to your general ledger. So they are on two separate systems, and sometimes there might be timing differences between what's recorded on one or the other. So a good way to ensure that your general ledger is accurate and complete is to reconcile the two systems. All right, now on the internal controls over financial reporting. If we could go back up one slide, please. One more. There we go. All right, so I mentioned that we had identified some material weaknesses and significant deficiencies in the audit this year on your internal control over financial reporting. Item 2021-01 is on bank reconciliations, is something we consider to be a material weakness. It does have a 2021 year on it, but this has been an ongoing issue since 2018, has not been corrected yet. And basically, bank reconciliations are just not being completed on a timely basis. Once they were reconciled this year, they did require a significant number of adjustments to get it to reconcile, and bank reconciliations are really a key component of internal controls over almost every financial reporting area. So very important to perform bank reconciliations on a timely basis, follow up on any discrepancies, and really, we recommend at least within 30 days after month end to have these done. The next item, 202102, still back on the previous slide, financial closing reporting. It's also something we consider to be a material weakness and also one that has been ongoing since 2018. The commencement of the audit this year was delayed. We began the audit in July of 2022. Most audit areas still required significant adjustments, there were over 90 adjustments to the trial balance, either some that were identified by management, some that were identified as part of the audit procedures. So again, the process was just not operating effectively during fiscal year 2021, issue just had not been corrected, and then on top of that, there was an ERP implementation during 2021, nine months into the year, which is added to the issues. Item 202103, on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards and state financial assistance, this is your CIFA. This lists all the grant expenditures that you have received over the, expended over the year, and through audit procedures, we identified $11 million of grant expenditures that had been left off of the report. Your financial statements included all the expenditures, your financial records were fine. It's just the CIFA preparation is more of a manual process, and through that process, these grants were inadvertently left off. This report is important, it's one that we use to select our major programs and one that grantors look at to make sure that you are properly reporting the grants and that they're being audited. And finally, item 202101, as it relates to plan audits. This is not a new issue, this has, again, been an ongoing issue. However, the way that we're reporting it this year is a little different. In the past, we have reported all the findings on the ACFER, and then the separate reports referred to the ACFER. This year, the findings are being reported in each of the separate reports as well. So this is on investment and pension or the retiree health insurance program, activity reconciliation. This is just ensuring that investment and trust fund activity are reconciled to the general ledger so that your general ledger is accurate and complete, includes all the information that has actually occurred during the year. Okay, now on to the next slide. So the two slides I just covered is information that's included in your boundary report, right? At the very beginning, you have our independent auditors' report, and then towards the end, you have the rest of the letters and the findings and other reports. Aside from the information in the boundary report, you also receive, your audit committee receives a letter called Communications with Those Charged with Governance, and that letter includes significant audit matters that were required to communicate to your audit committee. So the items that we, that we discuss that are included in those letters are qualitative aspects of accounting practices. So you've got your accounting policies that are disclosed in your note, in your notes to the financial statements, they're generally in Note 1, your retiree health insurance program is Note 2, that discloses your significant accounting policies. There were a couple of changes this year. The first is in the way that you're reporting the, or accruing the discretionary in half-cent sales taxes. In the past, you're recording the revenue as you receive it, in the current year, you are accruing one month of those revenues. So revenues you receive in October, you're accruing back to September. Both methods are acceptable, varies in industry. Management just felt that accruing one month of revenues was more consistent with your own policies and procedures. And then in the pension plans and retiree health insurance program, previously, the way that the equity in the cities pooled cash was being recorded was as cash and cash equivalents in the trust funds, whereas this year, that's being recorded as a due from the city. Since that cash is really in the name of the city and not the trust funds, it does make sense to record it as a due from the city. Your significant estimates are listed here, they're very standard for a city your size and with your operations. We do evaluate the key factors that go into making those estimates to determine that they are reasonable. And then finally, your sensitive disclosures, and we highlight Note 16 to the financial statements on inter-fund balances. This discloses inter-fund balances that are as a result of other funds overdrawing their equity and pooled cash, as well as from the allocation of the pension obligation bonds that are currently recorded in your governmental activities to the enterprise funds, such as GRU and RTS. The note also discloses any amounts that are not expected to be repaid within one year, so your not, your long-term receivables that are in non-spendable fund balance. Okay, and then on the next slide, remaining significant audit matters. We had difficulties encountered in performing the audit, the commencement and completion, as we discussed, were delayed. Again, you had turnover in key financial positions, so several issues that had been ongoing that hadn't been resolved, and then an ERP implementation on top of that. There were a number of corrected and uncorrected misstatements. They are attached to the corresponding governance letters, so you can see all the adjustments that were made after we received the trial balance, as well as any adjustments that were not made. We had no disagreements with management. Management did make representations to us that we relied on during the audit, and we're not aware of any management consultations with other independent accountants that were, that would be akin to a second opinion. and we're not aware of any management consultations with other independent accountants that would be akin to a second opinion. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Boyd. Appreciate it. If you'll stick around in case we have some questions a little bit later. Madam Manager, would you like to move to the city's response?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, just summarizing Ms. Boyd's presentation. This was an extremely difficult process to push through. At the onset of my appointment, it was clear this was a priority based on the state auditor general's report. My initial conversation with Ms. Boyd was that I would give it the the highest priority in terms of finishing this for fiscal two thousand twenty one or completing the audit. Up front, we shared with the audit committee and the commission that we had staffing challenges. We had turnover. We had staff that simply needed to be supplemented with the expertise to actually do this. We set out to, of course, do the recruitment. We were successful with that. But aside from personnel issues, clearly, as Ms. Boyd mentioned, we had challenges with a new ERP Enterprise Resource Planning Platform, Workday, that caused significant challenges in terms of data and the transfer of that data, working with two different systems. This audit is supposed to be completed nine months after the close of the fiscal year, which would have been June thirty, two thousand twenty two. Clearly, we are late. We are aware of that. In June, hired were Su Wang, who at the time was controller, along with another individual who unfortunately became ill. Within months of coming on board, Ms. Wang stepped up with the staff that she had, along with additional staff folk that have been hired and completed this audit. Again, it has been difficult. We actually started out with six findings. Two of those findings actually were dropped off and cleared. We ended up with four findings. The two that have actually stuck with the city and will continue to deal with those findings in twenty two, deal with bank reconciliations and year-end financial closings and reporting. Those are the two that we continue to have challenges with in terms of bank reconciliations. The other two findings, I believe, have been arrested and should not occur again. But again, we obviously have to work through that. Those two findings are around the CFA, which is the Schedule of Expenditures for Financial Assistance and State Assistance, and the other finding, which I am pretty sure because of the system issues that have been reconciled over the Building Department reconciliations. And so those two findings, CFA and the Building Department reconciliations, have basically been addressed. So we have two findings that continue to stick with us that I know that the finance director, Ms. Wang, and she will come up and speak to you in a few, have several people dedicated to working on our bank reconciliation process. Her staff is buckled down. I know they have worked weekends, they have worked holidays. It has been stressful, but they have taken this work very seriously. We are, we have a foundation to work on for twenty two. This is not easy work. We're still working through Workday, but they have taken it very seriously. And I believe that we are on our way for a twenty two audit to be finished on time, and that is by June of two thousand twenty three. And in fiscal twenty four, I believe that the city would be on much more solid, a much more solid foundation relative to the underpinnings of its financials. Again, Ms. Wang is here to present, talking about going forward. And if you would come forward, Ms. Wang, again, I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I can, because Sue and I have worked through this together. Her staff has been absolutely phenomenal. I want to recognize GRU staff who came on board on the front end of us, front end of this process, to lend some leadership and expertise. I also want to recognize April Shuping with CRI, who also assisted the city. We were in deep, trying to roll out of this, and I'm just pleased to be able to say that we have done so, and we have done it with staff in place, with few vacancies left actually to be filled on the accounting side of the house to assure that we have this under control for fiscal twenty two. And with that, Ms. Wang, thank you very much.
Thank you, madam. And one second, Ms. Wang. Commissioner Ariola before the presentation.
I'll wait till after the presentation.
Okay, Ms. Wang, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and the commissioners, Su Wang, Finance Director. Here is the city manager said to give an update on now that twenty one is complete, pending your approval, of course, the next steps and our progress, our challenges. So the city manager has called this, the completion of the twenty one audit, a milestone, which I wholeheartedly agree. So hopefully, you know, ten years, twenty years down the road, when we look back at this part of the city's history, where we had a major ERP implementation nine months into the fiscal year, where most of my accounting team members are new or newer, where we had to deal with two financial systems, two account structures, that we were able to get it done with a clean opinion. It's a huge achievement. The thanks go to my accounting team members, most of them are here. They deserve to be recognized without their efforts, without their keeping their heads down and get it done. We would not have been here today. And Ms. Curry has recognized Ms. Shuping, our GRU colleagues. They worked on this and they gave us the helping hand during the time of needs. So my sincere thanks to them as well. To Ms. Boyd, I think she's still online, for her dedication to our audit. And last but not the least, to Ms. Curry, for her leadership and guidance, for trusting us that we can get it done. So with your approval, we will be able to close two thousand twenty one and focus on two thousand twenty two, planning on two thousand twenty three and beyond. I'm looking forward to working with all departments on policies and procedures, on providing support and guidance for their financial decision-making. We are diving right into two thousand twenty two audit. The preliminary field work has been set for January the sixteenth, that's a month from today. This is when Ms. Boyd's team will come in for a day or two to test internal controls. They probably will load through the personnel files and go through the, do a walkthrough of all the processes and procedures. They will be here in on February the twentieth for the field work. This is when they will be here for two weeks. They will do the in-depth testing of all the audit areas to allow them to be able to issue their audit opinion. We are on track to provide the trial balance to purpose grade two weeks before the field work starts. This is less than two months' time. The next few things, those are the retiree health insurance plans and the pension plans. Every year, they need to go through a valuation by our actuary, and it takes time, it takes probably a month or so time, which is why I put it theirs, so that you're aware that progress has been made in providing the census data and the financial statements to the actuary so that they can perform the valuation. We are, as the city manager said, we are on track to complete the two thousand twenty two audit by the state deadline of June thirtieth of two thousand twenty three. At this time, we are expecting no new findings. These are the priorities that I shared with the commission a few months back. I would like to give an update on where we stand for these priorities. The first one is the process documentation. Of course, it's going to be ongoing. It's a top priority for us. Mountain Close, as you have heard, we have developed a comprehensive mountain checklist. We are using this checklist as a guidance for us to start closing November. In December, we expect to issue the trial balance and the financial reports starting in Q one of two thousand twenty three. Bank reconciliations, and you know, we heard a lot about it this morning. It's been a finding for several years. It's a top priority. We are devoting two people working on bank reconciliations. We are bringing in the expertise from our bidding and collections team because they know intimately the on the deposit side. We are expecting to complete the fiscal year two thousand twenty two bank reconciliations by December thirty first, two thousand twenty two. We have already started working on October and November bank reconciliations, and expect to get caught up by end of January. As Ms. Boyd said, you know, it's the best practice to reconcile the cash by thirty days after month end, and that's our goal. I think we'll be able to keep it up once we get caught up. The other balance sheet reconciliations is ongoing. Pension and payroll account mapping. We completed the retiree payroll mapping for fiscal year two thousand twenty three. We're going to keep monitoring, keep reconciling all our payroll accounts. Grants administration, you heard, for twenty one, we had six major programs. That's a lot. It's a big deal for the city. We are not taking it lightly. Marsha Lowry, who is sitting in the audience here, she has done an amazing job with grants, but she needs help, which is why we are recruiting for a grant accountant. GSB eighty seven leases is a new accounting standard for two thousand twenty two. It's a major project. It typically typically takes months to compile. We are making progress with that, and hopefully, it's not going to hold up our two thousand twenty two audit. Since we spoke last time, we added a few more things to our plate. I'm not going to go through them. They are all priorities. But I do want to point out the last one, that I feel that is very important for my department to start conducting training for for all departments in the city in terms of mountain close, in terms of payroll, timekeeping, in terms of procurement, receipting, invoices, et cetera. So as soon as we're able, we're going to start conducting the quarterly training for all departments. The staffing level, we are a young team in terms of our accounting team here. Our accounting manager and one accountant senior started on September the sixth of this year, been here for about three months. Our internal control manager has been here for less than two months. We recruited a financial systems architect. She started on October third, and our buyer started on October third as well. These new additions to our team have already made impact, and they are really complementing the skills of the current staff. So I'm very, very pleased with our new hires here. The staffing level, these are the functional areas in my department. The contract management is fully staffed. We have a contract manager. There's a staff who works with her, monitoring all the contracts for the city. The procurement, we have two buyers open. Operations team is the core of what we do. They are in the front line of for the for the city's financial operations. That's our bidding and collections team. That's our accounts payable team and payroll. They are fully staffed. We do have three new FTEs approved in the budget. We are assessing, especially for payroll, because it's a key position. We are assessing the succession planning. So we are not recruiting at this time, but we will start recruiting probably after we complete the two thousand twenty two audit. Pension and investment is not a big area in in my department, and they are fully staffed. Our chief investment manager, Andrew William Johnston, just has been doing a such amazing job. Internal controls, we have internal control specialist open. We are now looking for one right now. Ms. Eileen Marzek is serving in this role that we thought is a good fit because of her background and her experiences. In accounting, we are actively seeking a controller. We are seeking a accountant senior with grant focus. We still have a content two open, but we are not looking for one just right now. In terms of challenges for completing two thousand twenty two audit, we are probably about three months behind. Ideally, we should have started preparing for year end back in August and September, started preparing the schedules and and just start reconciling and reviewing in October and November. But here we are. So we feel, you know, it's really, one thing that we don't have is time, and it's going to be a challenge. And Workday is very normal for a city. Once we go through a new ERP implementation, that we still work through some of the setups, some of the configurations and the mapping, which is what we are doing right now. We have a dedicated, smart folks working on the issues that we are still experiencing with Workday. And I really think that we are making great progress. We are going to keep monitoring the staffing level and make recommendations as we see it. The opportunities and Workday, I didn't expect myself to to learn the old legacy system. Unfortunately, I had to. I spent lots of time on the old legacy system. It's old, it's antiquated, and it's time to go to a new ERP, which is what we have today, Workday, and has a lot of potential for us. Just one example is bank reconciliations. If we have Workday configured correctly, we should be able to have the system do about seventy percent of the reconciliations automatically, and that's what we are working towards. We're not there. So for two thousand twenty two, it's going to be manual reconciliations. But, you know, once we get two thousand twenty two completed, we should be able to start working on that and fully utilize the ERP to its full potential, I hope. And every one of my accountants can tell you, we learned so much from the two thousand twenty one audit, and it's fresh in my mind, in our mind, that we are ready to go for two thousand twenty two. We have over ninety funds in the city. So each fund has its nuances that it takes time for for me, for my staff to learn. But we feel like from what we learned from two thousand twenty one audit that it's going to be very helpful for us to complete the two thousand twenty two. And of course, we have a dedicated dedicated team, not just the accounting team, but also our operations team that's on, you know, cash receipt, on accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll, our investment, pension, procurement, every one of them on the second floor and the third floor of this building. They contribute greatly to our to our success. So with that, I am confident that we, even with very tight turnaround time, we should be able to complete the two thousand twenty two audit on time. Just know that once we get two thousand twenty two done, we should be able to go fall back into a normal routine operations that we are looking forward to, starting in the summer. So hopefully, by then, we'll be able to get caught up with everything, including bank rec, including mountain, that everybody here will be able to take a breathing time off, hopefully, well deserved. But but before we get there, we still have work to do. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wang. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wong. Thank you for your leadership. You came into a very challenging situation, and you have really shown exemplary leadership, and we're very appreciative towards that. I'm glad you brought your team with us. All of you, thank you so much. I know it's been a very, very difficult several months, but you should be very proud of the work you've done and the point that we're at today. And I'd also like to thank the folks from outside general government that helped out, the GRU folks and Ms. Shuping. Couldn't have been done without them. So thank you. Audits are always an opportunity. They help us learn what we can do differently, what we can do better, and we've certainly taken all that and I think incorporated that. So thank you for the update. Thank you for the recommendations, and I think you've really put us on a path to be a much stronger organization. So we appreciate that. Okay, we'll turn back to the commission. Commissioner Ariola.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll echo a lot of what you said. I'll just say that this commission, this government, and the public really owe you lot who worked on this a debt of gratitude. This is some very special work, and I would be remiss if I didn't give due credit to our city manager as well. I remember when you brought to us the vision for getting through this very, very difficult work. And at the time, you still needed to put a team together, and you found leaders who were able to find more leaders. And to me, that is the hallmark of leadership. As you mentioned, there's still more work to do, but as you told me, if you can do this, you can do anything. So very, very glad that here on Sunny Dye, we can live up to what we said a few months ago, which is that we will not leave this to the next commission. We will handle this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ariola. I mean, Commissioner Azantos, second time today. I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank the city manager and everyone who worked on this across GRU and in general government and Ms. Wang. Really, thank you. I know it's been a lot of long days and hard nights working through this, but it had to get done, and I very much appreciate it. The issues that are outstanding are solvable, and I think there's a path forward to address all of them in a timely manner. So thank you very much. I move the recommendation to, for this second.
A motion and second that we accept the general audit financial statements, independent audits reports, and annual governance letters, and we'll forward those to the state pending approval by the commission. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank Ms. Wong and the city manager, because this is quite a task to take on, and it's been resolved after we vote, I hope. We will move forward. I'd like for the city manager to just share the time process going forward to the state getting this information in.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, we have five things that we need to do. Once this has been fully reviewed and approved by the commission, immediately upon approval, we will electronically submit in that electronic format to the state, the annual financial report for '21. So that is the first thing that we need to do immediately. The second thing that we need to do is to submit a hard copy of this report as well to the state auditor general. We also need to submit hard copy and electronically a copy of this report to the joint legislative audit committee. They did contact us back in February. The mayor responded. I responded to them. I believe it was in August that we were still working on this. They actually responded about a month ago, saying that we needed to have this wrapped up by December 19th, which is next Monday. So we will be sending them a copy of the report. We also have a grant responsibility report to fulfill, and we would also be submitting a report to the GFOA, asking them to consider a recognition of the completion of this audit. So we have five things to do, and we will be doing them all later today, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to also take the opportunity to thank the city manager and her team and the entire finance team. We are operating at a high level, and I appreciate the tremendous amount of effort that has gone into that. I appreciate the general manager loaning some folks from the GRU finance team and the hard work that they put into this process as well. I know that it has been difficult and challenging, and I want each person who worked on it and who continues to work on the next statement to understand that this commission absolutely appreciates you, and we look forward to some great work in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, I could not allow everyone else to say thank you and not add my thanks to this situation as well. I think when I came on board, I was still drinking from the proverbial fire hydrant, as everyone has told me I would as a new commissioner. So I was learning a lot about this entire process, and to be quite honest with you, was overwhelmed, overwhelmed at the thought that we were facing what could have very well seemed insurmountable. But I am pleased that we reached a point in this process where we realized that we've got a team of folks who were able to push us past that point. Thank you, Manager Curry. Thank you to the entire team that has gotten us to this point, and I'm grateful that we are looking towards much brighter days. Thank you so much for all of the hard work and effort that you put into this.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, I will go to you to recognize any neighbors that we have signed up to speak to the side.
Nathan Scott.
It's nice that Commissioner Ariola just wants to leave and not listen to the citizens. Good afternoon, Nathan Scott. First foremost, I want to thank Ms. Wang. I believe that she's trying to clean up the mess that you guys have made, the commission, with your failure to provide effective management oversight. There's still a lot to be done. I think the purpose gray kind of swept over, glossed over a lot of things. There's a lot of things they didn't look at specifically. They said that there were material weaknesses, so they tried to, I think, try to highlight it in the best possible way, but I don't think this is a good reflection on the city whatsoever. The reality is, Mr. Poe, as the city commission's living in a perpetual state of denial and systemic excuse-making, management oversight is a key function of the mayor and the Gainesville City Commission that has been negligently ignored for years, as evidenced by the material weaknesses identified in the state audit report. This commission wants to give itself a raise, double its salary on top of a 9.6% increase. You think you deserve a raise when you failed repeatedly to provide effective management oversight of the city finances of the utility. Mayor Poe, you just said, and I wish we could play it back on video, audits are an opportunity. But in fact, Mayor Poe, that's not what you said three years ago. CBS 4, November 13th, 2019, Gainesville Mayor Lorren Poe believes a state audit is politically motivated, is a politically motivated request, calling it a thinly veiled attempt to play politics with the residents of Gainesville, also saying it's a waste of time and taxpayer dollars. Poe says they welcome the opportunity to put the claims to rest. TV 20, same day, city manager Lee Philman said he was surprised when he learned of Perry and Chuck Clement's requests, and that he believes the request stems from Holt, who's disgruntled, the former city auditor. "We're going to be open and cooperative. They can come look at our books, and we've got nothing to hide. I think it's a complete waste of resources, time, and effort." In summary, Mayor Poe, this commission's arrogant. You said, "Don't, nothing to see here." State audit proved there was. The state audit report validates the concerns brought forth by well-informed citizens that the mayor and the Gainesville City Commission have negligently ignored for nearly a decade. Specifically, that GRU has been crippled with debt, the general fund transfer is excessive, and that significant management deficiencies and material weaknesses exist within the city's general government finance department. That's the reality. Make all the excuses you want, but you got your hand validated by the state audit, which was adverse to the city.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we please have a next speaker?
Mr. Duncan Walker.
I am so sorry that Ms. Wang had to be put through this by the failure of our city commission. Our previous city commissioner, not commissioner, but city auditor, Mr. Carlos Holt, warned you numerous times about the problems. And like what you oftentimes do when you don't want to hear what they have to say in other charter officers, you fire them. And the other person we need to be thanking are concerned citizens. They continue to come before the city commission urging you to take care of the city finances, and you didn't. But I want to thank you all for, in Ms. Wang's department, for trying to clean up the mess that you've made for our citizens. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? That's it. Okay, thank you very much. Move back to the commission for a vote. Sorry, Madam Clerk, was there somebody else signed up? Okay, we'll go ahead and take you, Mr. O'Brien. Just for anything you want to talk to, there's a card at the entryway of both, and if you just fill out which items you want to speak to, then the clerk will call you up in order. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Poe. Commissioners, Ms. Chestnut and Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker, you're excused from the following comments, because you were not part of this overseer group that supervised the train wreck of the past four years. My name is Brian O'Brien for the record, and the reason that I went to Tallahassee with former city auditor Carlos Holt, United States Marine, who was gaslighted out of this job by the management through the use of their police department, and they smeared his family. It was a disgusting example of local manipulation. I was forced to hire an attorney to further pursue the illegal activities that are going on in this city. Unfortunately, my attorney appearing in this chamber was arrested by one of the prior city managers at the instruction of the mayor. My attorney, Ray Washington, had his fingers broken by the police department as they arrested him where he was peacefully standing at this podium. Your limitation of free speech did not go unnoticed. As to the item before us at this moment, thank you to Mrs. Boyd. She's always accurate and truthful in her report. I understand she's departing the account after this year, and I can't blame her for wanting to get away from the criminality that still lurks in the books. Can you imagine, folks at home, somebody not balancing their checkbook for four years? Every year that this has been on the report, we've received promises from the dais that this will be answered. We will get on this. Here we are, this nice lady that's in charge of the finance department now has only been here since June. Did the administration hire someone that had experience in workday, this shiny new system they were implementing? No. Ms. Wong was thrown in the position of having to learn a brand-new accounting software from the ground up. This is by design, folks. This is what has happened to so many dedicated employees. They're put in a position where they cannot succeed by the people responsible for running this city. It is so irresponsible. When you respond to people in Tallahassee with your personal note, that was an illegal act. You had no permission from this commission to say there were no problems with the audit.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Appreciate your comments. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Poe. I'd be glad to see you go.
Ms. Martinez, I believe you know the rules, but there's no cheering or jeering during meetings. Thank you so much. That's it? All right, thank you very much. We will then move to a vote by the commission. The motion is to accept the report and forward the relevant documents to the state. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously with one absent. Thank you all very much. Ms. Wong, your team, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, hopefully you get a little rest over the break and right back to it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is 2022-784, Contract for Purchase and Sale of Real Property. Shands Teaching Hospital and Clinics with a recommendation that the commission direct the interim city manager, Desikne, to execute the contract for purchase and sale of real property regarding the subject property and all related documents, subject to approval as to form legality by the city attorney.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Manager?
Andrew Persons is available remotely, if we can pull him in.
I'm here, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Good to see you. I hope you're feeling okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to join via Zoom. Eric Bradfeld's here as well, in case there's any follow-up questions. But this is the transfer of a portion of the formerly Shands property to the city for a consideration of $10. And then the city's actually going to be constructing the roadway improvements out for the site. The transferred property will be transferred to RTS, which will be the new home for the transit transfer station. And we are currently working with the FTA right now on getting the required materials to them for funding for, to start the construction, hopefully later this year, or later next year.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bradfeld, anything to add?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, happy holidays to everybody. Yeah, we've been working on this particular donation of the property to facilitate the larger eastside health and economic development initiative. I could show you just a visual on the overhead, just so you have a sense of what we're doing here. So just to give you an idea, and by the way, for the commission, we've been to the commission several times this year with various aspects of this project. We came to the commission with the joint funding proposal for the urgent care clinic. We came to the commission for the land use and zoning change. And right now, the way this is going to work is that this is Hawthorne Road. This is southeast 8th Avenue. The urgent care clinic will be basically constructed on this property here. And then this is the lot that is being conveyed by the contract that's on your agenda today. And this would be to facilitate the RTS transfer facility. This property is the property that we brought to the city commission a couple of months ago, the white electric piece that we're under contract with. And then as you go further to the east, you hit another city property, NGTech. And so the idea is to make this property part of the overall project, and then the city will construct the roadway.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Persons, Mr. Bradfeld, Commissioner Ariola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the staff involved in bringing this. You know, it's just such a wonderful opportunity for our city, for Shands, and really to help people get the medical care they need. So I'd like to go ahead and move the staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion and second that we approve the recommendation. Commissioner Azantos.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on the roadway network that's being constructed by the city. Will it have protected or buffered bike lanes as part of it? I mean, there'll be a lot of buses that are large and dangerous. Even if they're going slow, it's still heavy.
I'm going to let Mr. Man take care of that question.
Great.
I definitely want to make it a multimodal hub. I think having that would be a beneficial
Mr. Man.
Mr. Mayor, Phil Mann, City Manager's Office. To Commissioner Azantos' question, we're currently designing the roadway network, and what we're looking at is a separated 10-foot multi-use trail instead of a bike lane because of the number of buses that are going to be using that road. We felt that given that the overall design of the neighborhood, the idea to bring in multimodal people to use the transit station, it would be a better use of our right-of-way to put in a multi-use trail.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just to add to Mr. Man's point, we are also planning a trail along the southern portion of Southwest 8th within the GRU easement, so the multi-use path would also connect with that. So that was another reasoning.
Excellent. That's great to hear that connectivity being thought of on the front end. All right, sounds good. Madam Clerk, who have signed up to speak to this?
Nathan Scott.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor Poe, commissioners. So it's back to this. This is another, we want the eastside clinic. I get that. City needs that. East Gainesville needs that. What I don't get is the city commission's willingness to just do everything for the benefit of Shands, UF Health, University of Florida. So... So let's go back in history. Wanted Eastside Clinic, for-profit healthcare provider, to get state money, federal money, all kinds of money, wants you to build a building for them using taxpayer dollars that they could have built themselves and given back to the community. They chose not to, so that cost us $5 million. We're putting them into business so they can make money and provide a service, but they're making money, make no mistake. So now, in this development area, as stated on the map, we're going to have a RTS facility, and that's a good thing. So what's going on here is that they're conveying land to the city for the tune of $10 in consideration. That's fine. But wasn't talked about reciprocally is that this roadway that you guys are going to build and be responsible for maintaining is going to cost approximately $2.2 million using GCRRA money, according to the staff narrative. So now we're into this project between putting UF Health in business for the tune of $5 million for building, and then now we're building the road infrastructure for $2.2 million, $7.2 million, I think, if my math is correct, but numbers may have changed. But, you know, at what point is UF going to step up? And it pains me to say this as a double gator. Who's giving money to the University of Florida? When the hell are they going to give back to the community? Because they take a lot and they don't give. There's no payment in lieu of taxes. They take fire service. There's a lot of things. And y'all whine and complain constantly about property being off the tax rolls. Tallahassee has three state universities, state government, they don't make those ridiculous excuses. But we hear it from you guys all the time, who keep raising our property taxes and our GRU rates because you guys prostitute yourselves to developers of the University of Florida. And I think you guys need to be a little bit more diligent in terms of extracting fair value and getting people to be community partners, rather than just giving them whatever they come up to this podium and take from you. And I think that's a fair narrative. And to Commissioner Hayes Santos' point about multimodal, I'm fine with that, but dedicated bike lanes aren't working. I'm getting run over on Newberry Road with a dedicated bike lane right next to me that no one's doing because we're running over on the sidewalks where there are bicycles. So make 12-foot sidewalks, please, that can be joint use and keeps them off the road and let's share the sidewalk. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hawley, wow.
Thank you. Just another opportunity to again point out, Shands is imposing on us what suits their expansion ambitions. We do not need a broken-arm clinic on the east side. We need primary care to help people with chronic health conditions like hypertension, heart problems, asthma, COPD, et cetera. As the previous person said, when is the UF going to be a willing partner and reciprocate things? This community gave them an entire hospital, and they tore it down. Now, we're going to give them, we're going to spend huge money to give them a facility to provide us other than what we critically need. Our people on the east side need to be able to see doctors, to help them live better, and stop having to go to emergency rooms because they haven't been able to have ongoing primary care. This is not taking care of the citizens. We're going to build them a road, we're going to maintain that road, we're going to give them a facility. And what are they doing for us? They're dumping hundreds of graduate student families onto our already broken housing market. And we're going to do favors for them? I mean, it's some kind of masochistic drive to keep serving somebody who beats the mess out of you.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Martinez, I want to make sure she's not.
We need to save all our money so we can pay the commissioners.
Just want to make sure she's not in the hall.
Ms. Martinez, if you're out there.
Our next speaker is Mr. Brian O'Brien.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. I have not studied this issue, but it's crystal clear from listening to Kelly and Nathan that the city is not getting anything back in return for their investment. I would ask the commission to at least obligate Shands to provide free care for the folks on the east side. The needs that he's speaking about, the primary care facility, is, I believe, what the people on the east side have been lacking and asking for for years. So if you want to, you know, turn this into a good thing, require that Shands provide primary care for the folks on the east side. I hate to lapse into personal stories, but my father was a family physician, and he was in the day when family physicians delivered to babies and took care of the geriatric people. And these problems that Kelly's talking about, the COPD and the kidney failure and heart problems, and, you know, all the things that we all run into in life, and especially as you age, these are real needs, and these people deserve it. The commission, you know, has been ignoring the east side for so long. I wasn't exactly sure what Charles Chestnut was talking about the first time I attended a county commission meeting, when he said, "Well, you know, there was some big program that you had started, Poe, changing the GCRRA, and you were just manipulating to avoid the audits of the CRA, so you morphed it into a GCRRA or something like that." A lot of things were promised to the east side, and I hope they come to fruition. Here's an example where you could make this one of those things. If you want to add some real sense of accomplishment, do something to get Shands, the enormous town-gown relationship that you have tried to claim your leader of, well, do something. Get something done for the people on the east side. And it doesn't look to me like that's going to happen. Furthermore, it really seems from the items that I have studied that your real intention is to tear down Rosa Parks Transfer Station and relocate everything over there, which is fine by me, but I think it's an insult to the taxpayers to do it under the rug, like you seem to perform all of your little magic tricks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Poe.
Madam Clerk? That's it? Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Chestnut, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've heard from several citizens to talk about what Shands is not providing, and that the city, in our cost, we provided $2.5 million, along with the county, to match the county's $2.5 million to build this facility. Now, here's what Shands will provide, and here's what our citizens need. Shands will pay for every physician, every nurse, every secretary, all ancillary services that go forward to operate a facility. I hope that they will share with us, at the end of the first full year of operation, what that cost is for them. This is a, we get that service from here going forward, period.
Please, no outbursts. Thank you.
From here going forward. I think it's going to far exceed the $2.5 million that we have put in. Our citizens deserve that. Secondly, we all know that Shands cannot refuse anyone who shows up at their door with no insurance. They must treat them. Unlike some other facilities, they just can't turn them away. The Eastside Clinic was built to provide primary care. Maybe they're going to be able to have a better coordination of the health facilities between the complex that we're doing here on Hawthorne Road and the Eastside Clinic. We'll see. But I think that we should not take it lightly that Shands is responsible for operating that facility, and I don't think I've ever heard of an urgent care center closing. I don't believe. So I think we need to recognize that fact, that they will be putting back into this community. I think the commission, both commissions, were wise to invest in the urgent care center. This is what the people have been asking for. This is what the people need. We all know that the most expensive portal of entry for health services is the emergency room, and this is what they're addressing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Chestnut, for providing some historical context and also sharing with us some of the things that Shands will be providing. From the beginning of this, and I don't want to take too long with this, because I think I made my position very clear about the Eastside Clinic from its onset, and my hope had also been that we would see an expansion of what's providing. But I think my biggest concern here, moving forward, as I look into the future, is that the commission that is coming on will be focused, as I will be focused, on really shifting the relationship that the city has with the University of Florida. I know we have entered into certain conversations, we've broached this subject before, but I think that we need to, as we move forward, be very, very intentional about that. The University of Florida is not our only neighbor here, but also I will say this, that there is space, and also I have a personal desire to see a tax-paying entity come over into East Gainesville to possibly provide health care. I would love to see that. I have an idea for a Center for Health Equity that is being done in other places, and to be quite frank and transparent, I think that we need to entertain all of the possibilities that exist. We need to be a little more diverse in the way that we think. Thank you, UF, for what it is you're going to be doing, even though we had to pay for it, and we haven't paid for it on any other side of town. We paid $5 million between the city and the county to do that work in East Gainesville. And when I asked the question at the very onset of my entry into this conversation, no one said we ever had to pay for it anywhere else. But here we are, and we're getting a service. I'm grateful for that. I think as we look to expand it, however, that we need to be very mindful of bringing in new conversations, different ways of thinking, and new partners, but also improving the relationship with the University of Florida in a way that really equitably benefits the people of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. First thing I want to do is refocus us on the actual issue before us in the motion, which is to accept a piece of property for next to free, so we can build our eastside transit transfer station there, which is a much-needed and long-awaited amenity on Hawthorne Road, and will greatly improve the quality of life for so many neighbors living in that area. That is a good thing. Secondly, and I think Commissioner Chestnut's comments alluded specifically to this, but the expected operating loss is between $300,000 and $500,000 a year for this clinic. That is why they are asking for some assistance, some public assistance, to cover those operating losses. But the more important thing that I think is missed in this is that this creates a future opportunity. Dr. Nelson is absolutely committed to expanding the footprint and services. This is the door that opens those possibilities. He wants to bring mental health care to this location. I had an incredible meeting with the brand-new head of pediatrics at UF. He's only been here about four months. He wants to provide pediatric services at this location. He's enthusiastic about that. The dental clinic wants to provide services at this location. None of that is possible without this first step. And so the only thing that is going to prevent UF from doing more and offering those expanded services is if every time this comes up, we attack them and tell them they're not welcome. Because then they'll walk away, and they have no reason to do that. And so I think I am excited about Commissioner Duncan Walker's effort to strengthen that relationship, because that's exactly the thing that's going to get them to invest even more in an area of our city that we know has been underserved by health care. And I'll conclude by saying that we do have primary care, and that is where my doctor is, and that's where I visit, and it's an incredible clinic. And, you know, I know that the relationship between the primary care clinic on Waldo and this urgent care clinic will only strengthen with these steps. So with that, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item is back on page three. Item 2022-797, Lot 10, Fourth PSA Amendment with a recommendation that the commission approve the proposed changes for Lot 10 and authorize the city manager, or there does it need to execute the Fourth Amendment, the contract for sale and purchase for Lot 10, subject to approval by the city attorney as to form legality.
Thank you. Madam Manager, you want to give an introduction here?
Sir, Mr. Persons is on the line to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here for any questions. Essentially, as the agenda item states, the city commission approved the purchase and sale agreement for Lot 10 back in October of last year. The property closed in the beginning of this year, in January. The current purchase and sale agreement caps the 104 condominium units, as they were originally intended or conceived of, at 140% of AMI, with the majority being 120. But all of those provisions were subject to construction costs and prevailing interest rates, which I think, as the commission is aware, has changed pretty dramatically over the last year. To compensate for that, the AMJ, who's the Lot 10 developer, has requested that the city consider amending the purchase and sale agreement to allow for rental units as well as elderly housing units. They would keep the 140% AMI cap for all 104 units, and then the 120% AMI would be capped at 20% of those units. So essentially, everything would be 140 or below, and then 20% of those units would be 120 and below. I did want to point out, too, that the original purchase and sale agreement provisions set aside $1 million of the sale price to be used in the project for onsite affordable units. The provisions that we're talking about are completely independent of that million dollars. That would be, we're going to bring that back to the commission as part of a developers' agreement early next year with recommendation for how that money would be allocated. So what we're talking about here is only the unsubsidized portion of the units, that million dollars before that gets applied in the future. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe Representative AMJ is there, too, to answer any questions, provide any insight from their side.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Commissioner Ariola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually a fact. My first meeting as a city commissioner, Lot 10 was on the agenda.
Commissioner, line two.
2008. So I know very well that this motion will not be the final chapter in the story of Lot 10, but I believe we are in the section of the story where we're about to finally reach the conclusion. Mr. Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second. Motion second, that we approve the recommendation. Commissioner Hayes Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question on the housing, the 104 units. Is that a cap, or is that a minimum?
That's a minimum, and that number hasn't changed from the original agreement.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, I think allowing diversity of rentals and then elderly housing is the, the climate has changed dramatically in terms of interest rates and being able to bring affordable products to the market, so I think a rental might be able to have more affordable units if they decide to go in that direction. And I'm glad we can give them that flexibility. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to thank Andrew for clearing that up for me. My original concern was that the $1 million that was being set aside for the affordable housing component would not be disturbed. affordable housing component would not be disturbed, so that is still the way that we originally intended it. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd support this, obviously. I, I am, I, I believed for a long time and continue to believe that, that rental affordability is, is a greater problem right now at, at, at the low end, and senior housing is something we just rarely discuss. We, we talked about, and did a lot of work to get Deer Creek moving, but it's been years since we had that discussion. We just don't talk about senior affordability at this dius very often. So I'm glad to see that become a part of this, and I actually am, am pleased that, that this will be available for, for rental opportunities rather than purchase-only. I want there to be a path to people owning their homes. I, I absolutely support that, but the crisis is at, is at rental affordability, and I'm glad that that will be addressed here. And I would point out that even 140% of AMI is, leaves a significant gap between that and market rate. Market rate is significantly higher than 140% of AMI. I would like to see us get, get some actual numbers on what that is. It's my gut feeling for it, and that has nothing to do with this motion, but I, I'm interested for, from staff at some point in the coming months to see some kind of survey on what market real realities are as, in the context of area median income. So, thank you.
Thank you. The only, I, I support the motion and the, and the effort, absolutely. More flexibility in this climate is important. The only thing that I would like, I'm going to sort of speak directly to the three people, three elected officials at this dius who will be here in January, as well as staff. The only thing I would not want to see in a development plan is sort of four fours, the, the sort of rent-by-room model of housing. I don't think that's the intention at all of the developer, but I think a little language in that final development agreement to ensure that would be helpful. I think the intention is to have, you know, sort of typical two-one studios, that sort of thing, because we do, I think, have a, a sort of critical mass of those specifically student-oriented type of, of housing opportunities, and I think something different downtown that would allow for families, for young professionals, you know, to, to enter the market as well would be beneficial. So I'm just kind of putting that on your all's radar, and when that, when you get to that point of the conversation where you're getting a development plan, just to sort of double-check that. But again, I, I know that has not been the intention of the developer from the start, so I expect that to not be an issue. Is that, the clerk? Oh, Mr. Persson, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I wanted to follow up to, to your comments. That has actually been a conversation topic with, with the AMJ folks and staff, just about because they're trying to do exactly as was described with like family housing and, you know, professionals and things like that, as opposed to, you know, more of a, a student-oriented product. That does make the financials, you know, that much trickier because you're not running by the room, and some of the, the things that we've been doing on the inclusionary zoning front with student projects work, whereas some, a project like this, it, it, the numbers don't quite work out. So that is very much, I think, still what, what they're thinking, and, and they may want to speak to that as well, but I just wanted to share that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Persson. All right, we'll move to the clerk. Anybody sign up to speak to this item?
Nathan Scott.
Yes. Good morning. Mayor, Commissioners, Nathan Scott. I'll keep this short. This is the way it should be done. Transparent, vetting in the open, having some discussion. There may be good reason for why something needs to be amended, but it should be discussed openly, not rubber stamped, so that everyone knows what's going on, so that there's some intelligent discussion, which has been devoid from the dius because you guys are more concerned with virtue signaling and doing all this than you are other things. So it's interesting to, to see, you know, commissioners make lofty speeches about this and that and what have you, but, you know, I'll go back to ask the basic question. You talk about, well, affordable rentals, all this, crisis. Y'all use the love, y'all love to use that word. Y'all sit there and crisis this, crisis that. Well, one political faction has run this city for two decades and didn't fix affordable housing problem before it became an alleged crisis. So to that point, how much affordable housing could have been built had this commission used $36 million in federal ARPS funding to build affordable housing with all that money? So don't come up here talking about, well, you raised our taxes because you want that for affordable housing now, too, because you had to piggyback on wild spaces and public places to do those things, because you can't spend limited taxpayer money, which was a one, one in a generational gift from the federal government that we're all going to be paying for, for future generations, but you can't spend that, that gift of money wisely, I mean, to solve the crisis. You guys lecture us about this crisis, that crisis, climate change, you're all a bunch of hypocrites. You spew carbon emissions through the atmospheres, you fly all over the world, want to raise your salaries while you have GRU that doesn't have bills to, to 5,600 customers, and you guys don't know the financial state of the city, but this is not good governance, folks. So I just ask that instead of putting things on consent agenda on a foregoing basis, that we have these discussions so that we have openness and transparency, because Mayor Poe, you ran on transparency, and that's kind of like a joke that's faded over time. I mean, there is no transparency, hardly any, in the city right now. We need to get back to that, and if you did, and you regain the trust of your taxpayers and GRU customers, you might not get the scrutiny that's well-deserved of this commission because you guys are just tone deaf and don't get it. But we need to have these discussions and talk openly and honestly, and I continue to be dismayed by the false narratives. Sounds like you guys are campaigning for developers or Shands UF Health half the time up there. I don't know, but something's not right. We need to have these discussions. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Brian O'Brien.
Thank you, Ms. Ganim. Just a couple of things on this one. I would like to ask, point out to me where the PSA has a contingency for market conditions. I, I don't see that in the contract. The other question I've got is how is 140% of AMI in affordable housing that we're subsidizing? Or 120%? I, I just don't see how, how this works. Friend over here, the, was commander of the beginning of this train wreck, they just asked the county commission to lease office space. So I, I just don't want to subsidize other people's projects, trying to use developers and growth to, to dig your way out of the financial mess you've created. It's, it's just a bad strategy.
Madam Clerk?
Anthony Lyons.
Good afternoon, Anthony Lyons, representing AMJ. 2006. I got here in 2006. There's a project called Gainesville Greens on a little lot called Lot 10, and so this is not a competition, but that was my first. I'm sure someone can walk in and, because that was three or four years before that that people had started, so this has been a ongoing issue. I think we have made it further thus far than most in terms of actually buying the land. We meet with the architects tomorrow if this passes today to finish some of the planning for that. So it's a project we're still committed to, even though the financing is getting hard, certainly on our side. If you're an end user, it's near impossible to get a mortgage right now that's, even after today, rates changing, or yesterday it'll be, you know, in the 7% range, which, you know, more than two and a half times the finance cost for a project right now for the end user. With my last few moments, I'd like to thank you all, just as a point of personal privilege, if you will. Four years ago, I left the city. You're all leaving the city today. I want to thank those that I served with. You've been wonderful, and it's, it's, there is an other side that's still good and happy, contrary to what you may hear in this room. Life is fairly good. The city seems to be in good shape and heading in the right direction from everything I've seen, and anyway, I, I appreciate the city's support in what we're doing. It's something I try to still continue on outside the city, and I'm sure you all have great careers and lives after this, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk? All right. So we got a motion on the floor to approve the recommendation. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have reached the end of our business for this morning, so we will be in recess until Good afternoon, everybody. Going to call this meeting back to order. We, there were, there was a, just a misprint on the agenda. So earlier when we adopted our agenda, we did move, or make sure that early public comment and general public comment will be first shared 1:00, as it normally is. I, I, you know, I don't know what happened this time, but no big deal. We corrected it. And just as, I see some new faces. If you are here to speak on any particular item on our agenda, there's a comment card on the, the two little tables near the door. You can just fill that out and then give it to our clerk over here, and then when that item comes up, they will call you in order. We also have an early public comment period, so if you would like to comment on an item now that comes up later on our agenda and then be able to leave, I know that we're all busy and we have other things we might want to do, you can tell us which item, you can tell us which item that you would like to speak on, and then you can come up and do it during early public comment, and that you just forfeit your ability to speak later in the, in the meeting. So the, again, the comment cards are on both sides there, and just hand those to the clerk after you fill them out. So with that, Madam Clerk, our first item...
Okay. Our first item is early public comment, and our first speaker is Rich Popovich.
All right. Welcome. Mr. Popovich, Vic, just tell us which item you're speaking on.
I came up to talk to you about you guys wanting to increase your salary, and I honestly have to say that you guys are in a public service job, and it seems like you forgot it. You're going to use something that deals with county commissioners and address it to yourselves in order to boost your salary. So you'll be getting paid as much as the county commissioners. So I want to know, are they going to take a pay increase, too, so that they're in front of you now? What you're doing isn't right. Doubling your salary, especially after sitting through the first part of the meeting and listening to all the issues that you have, and rewarding yourselves by doubling your salary, I don't get that. I don't see any reason for you to do any of that. Well, what happened to public service? That's literally out the window. Now, if you're not making enough money doing your job, you should go get another job. If you think that this job's overworking you, you shouldn't run for public office because that's not what you're here for. You're not here to make a living. You're not here to make more money. You're here for public service. So I want you to understand that I don't have anything against you personally, I just think you're money grubbers. So what I want to do is give you a salary range for your job, since I know this job is a part-time job. It's not a full-time job. The city manager does the old stuff, and you chit-chat and tell him what to do. So as a part-time job, you people should make 15% less than the lowest-paid worker in the city of Gainesville. That way, you'll be getting paid for what you actually do. What do you mean, twice a month? How often do you meet? How often do you meet, Mayor? You don't know?
It depends on the week. We usually meet between 40 and 60 hours a week.
You have twice, two, twice?
Forty to 60 hours a week.
Yeah, okay.
Is this job?
Yeah. It doesn't warrant $80,000 a year or $75,000 a year. There's no way. If you, if you get 15% less than the lowest-paid worker, the lowest-paid worker, I guarantee you, will get a job increase. It's a wonderful thing. But to give yourselves and double your own money, I don't know any business or anybody that's done what you've done and got doubled the salary, unless they're in Congress. Now, maybe you're all studying and want to go to Congress, but you're not there yet, okay? So what you need to do is chill out. Put this to the public. The public should be able to vote on any salary increases you people get. It shouldn't be left up to you, obviously, because, look at what you're doing. The public should decide this.
Thank you very much. I'm afraid your time has expired, but we appreciate you sharing your comments.
Pardon me?
I'm afraid your time has expired, but we appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
I hope you take into consideration somewhere I said, because I know you don't pay attention to nobody.
We, we paid attention, absolutely. Thank you for sharing your comments. Madam Clerk?
Okay. I do want to ask, Ms. Martinez, did you want to speak during early public comment?
Let me try to figure out the new comment. It was early, was something about the end of coming later?
Correct.
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
I don't want my, 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 already.
That's it for early public comment. Our next item is general public comment. Mr. Nathan Scott.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Nathan Scott. So with respect to some procedural matters, there's been questions about abstentions of vote. So Florida Statute 286.012, voting matters, or voting requirements at meetings, members may not abstain... may not abstain. Their vote shall be recorded for each member present unless there is or appears to be a possible conflict interest. And if you look at Florida Statute 112.3135, salaries and expenses do not represent a conflict interest. So I expect today that everyone will vote up or down, and those of you that conveniently vote no, because you've got four votes to rubber stamp your salary increase, I hope that you'll donate your increased salary to charity if you have the courage to vote against it, instead of benefiting from it. Other matter that we need to talk about, where systemic failure of the city commission, and mayor, I might add, I mean, you've been here a decade, Commissioner Ward, you've been here numerous years, you two have been here at the same time, systemic failure to provide effective management oversight. In the real world, you want to get raises, you'd be fired for gross negligence, incompetence, and failure to provide effective management oversight. So I think we need to look at the audit findings, I think we need to look at the fact that GRU has 13%, 14% equity left on its balance sheet. It's not the utility owned by those it's served, it's owned by Wall Street bankers that hold up a mountain of debt. And this is what your failed policies have caused, and your failure to put attention where attention should be due. You have 5,600-plus GRU customers that don't have their bills that are being estimated disarbitrarily. That, it's not a good reason. I mean, you guys cite, systemically cite excuse after excuse, make excuses for everything. Never once has this commission, including you, Mayor Poe, stepped up and said, you know what? We have shortcomings, we failed, we did something wrong. You just make excuse, oh, we don't have staff, or we didn't have finance staff. That's what you're supposed to be doing. You're supposed to lead by example. Roll up your shirt sleeves, take a sharp pencil, and start looking at core governance. And you guys don't. You virtue signal, you travel all over the globe while you lecture us on climate change, spewing carbon emissions all over the world, and you have the audacity to put on masks and take them off conveniently, and it's just utter hypocrisy. I want, I want irrespective political affiliation, I just want good governance and fiscal responsibility by and for the citizens. We don't have that. We have you pandering to special interest groups and telling the rest of us, F you. That's what these raises are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker is Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. I'm Debbie Martinez. For the past five years, Poe and Mr. Ward launched their war on public comment in single-family neighborhoods through rule changes here at City Hall and drastic zoning changes. It was clear to those of us who follow city government that the men on the city commission chose to gut public comment during regular city commission meetings as more and more residents were coming to City Hall to object to your extreme policy changes. With all the hell the city commission majority put our residents through over the past five-plus years, citizens remained civil as they made their voices heard. I would like to quote what Ms. Tana Silva said in her email to you this week. "The commission for almost seven years has brought unprecedented spending, endless meetings, and unproductive busywork by promoting individual ideas at public expense, micromanaging city functions, and sending staff in circles trying to obey directions. Under this mayor, and the very unwise overturning of governance of 2016, transparency, trust, Mr. Ward, accountability, respect, and public participation are gone. The employee wage gap has widened even as the payroll increased $22 million. Millions more are paid needlessly to consultants. Spending has increased nearly 50%. Attrition has hurt city operations, and general disarray prevails. All that is needed is a thorough reset right away in the new year to return the commission to its actual job rather than micromanaging city government and running it and GRU into the ground."
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Speaker is Mr. Brian O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Brian O'Brien, for the record, I grabbed a bite to eat, I got a chance to read a little bit of the paper, and I see that, Mr. Poe, you've been writing letters to Tallahassee again, and they seem to have responded to your spin and lies by filing a lawsuit regarding this zoning change that you're attempting to push through. Very saddening to me that Ms. Peggy Carr and Fay Williams had to go to that extent to try to counter your disgusting rezoning of the entire city, continuing destruction of neighborhood and the folks' equity in this town in favor of developers like your buddy Lyons and the rest of them that, that need something for free. But I, I didn't come here to speak about that, I just thought it was interesting that, again, you're, you're in the news for writing letters to the folks in Tallahassee which contain lies, mistruth, misrepresentation, and, and straight-up incorrect facts. Regarding this pay raise, it's just obnoxious that...
That item's on our agenda, so you can speak to that when it comes up.
Oh, good, good, Poe. Thank you very much. I look forward to that. This, the comprehensive financial report that we heard about earlier from Mr. Boyd, it, it's just unbelievable to me that somebody put an item on the agenda for today labeled number 2022-805. This item was appended underneath all the factual data about the report, and it essentially is just another one of your spend documents. It's, it says, what does the report say? And then it, it goes on to give a paragraph of information which is untrue, and it completes by saying that there's no new findings. Well, that's interesting, because there were no new findings, but they were the same old findings. Failed to balance your checkbook for four years, which now we've been told it'll be five years, and this will likely go on to 24, according to Ms. Wang's testimony earlier. So that'll be six years that we've seen that in there. No fraud in financial operations. These audits are not designed to detect fraud. The fact that these unreconciled checkbooks go back years is an indication that the fraud is yet to be found. We do not know where the bottom of this pit of misery you've created. And then it says, or theft of city funds. We don't know that. The, the P-card audit is still hanging out there, and we'll look forward to getting to the bottom of it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Poe.
Madam Clerk?
That's it for today.
Okay, thank you very much. On to our next item. Madam Clerk?
Our next item is Resolution 2022-779, watershed planning initiative grant for the Houghtown Creek watershed master plan, with the recommendation that the commission adopt the resolution, which authorizes the city manager designate to execute a grant agreement and any other necessary documents with the Florida Division of Emergency Management for a watershed planning initiative grant subject to approval by the city attorney as to form and legality.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
For the received, for receiving a grant from the state, Mr. Mayor, you want to expound on that, but this is just necessary, it actually was placed on the agenda pretty quickly because we needed to respond.
Very good, thank you. All right, welcome.
Gail Moore, you're with Public Works Stormwater, here to answer any questions you might have about the grant.
Okay, appreciate that. Commissioner Ariola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move the adoption of the resolution.
Motion second, that we adopt and propose resolution. Madam Clerk, anybody signed up to speak to this item?
Ms. Martinez? Mr. O'Brien?
That's it, okay. Back to the commissions, the roll call vote.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco is absent. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes Santos?
Aye.
And Mayor Poe?
All right, that motion passes unanimously with one absent. Next item, please.
Item 2022-788, resolution authorizing amendment of existing forward starting swap with Wells Fargo Bank on Series 2019A bonds, with the recommendation that the commission approve the resolution authorizing the amendment of existing 2019A forward starting swap with Wells Fargo Bank to moderate the interest rate fluctuations with the proposed 2023 fixed-rate bond issue, and the entering into of a new forward starting swap to moderate the interest rate fluctuations on the expected future issuance of bonds that will refund the 2019A bonds.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Benton?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, back on October 6th, at your meeting, the commission authorized, approved a resolution authorizing the general manager to negotiate and execute three financial transactions. One of these was a cash-settled forward swap that was intended to manage the interest rate risk associated with a $150 million fixed-rate new-money bond issued planned for the spring of 2023. In the course of soliciting proposals for this transaction, we received an alternate financing structure from one of the participating banks, and I'll just walk through the, the changes that that represents from, from what you heard on October 6th. So for the, the new-money issue in the spring of '23, it would be a variable-rate issue instead of a fixed-rate issue. We would move an existing swap on our 2019A bonds over to that new-money bond issue to hedge the interest rate risk on that variable-rate debt. We would then enter into a new swap to hedge the, to replace the 2019A swap that we moved over. Our financial advisor, PFM, spent a lot of time going over this, this proposal, and their results were, they looked at it, and it will, it will cost us about $15 million less in total debt service expense versus the original structure that you saw on October 5th. We thought that was substantive enough to, to bring your attention and ask for, to authorize this resolution, which allows us to amend that 2019A swap and then enter into a new one to replace it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Benton. Turn back to the commission, Commissioner Hayes Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the resolution and staff recommendation.
Motion second, that we approve the proposed resolution. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nathan Scott?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Nathan Scott. So I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Benton and Claudia a little bit on this. Couple months ago, there was a proposal that came before the commission that was related to this, where on some of the biomass purchase debt, those of us, including myself, urged you to finance that at fixed rate, and, because interest rates were at a historic all-time low. And they're like, no, we're going to do some variable-rate debt, which defies logic, but we're going to save this incremental interest rate, because we're going to put this little swap and stuff on it. So two months ago, and again, you know, I talked to Darren Cook about this too, at the time, when he was on the UAB, and, and so the benefit of, of that was they put this swap in, and it's gotten really convoluted, structured, financed, where I used to do this for a living, and, and I'm having keep, trouble keeping track of what you guys doing. It's just like Wolf of Wall Street, revolutions, come up with a new idea, because you've got 15%, 14% equity left in your utility, and it's owned by the, the people that hold the debt. Of course, they're going to come up with new ideas to spread your debt and collect more fees. It's just a cyclical, cyclical thing. But to what happened two months ago, you had a swap, and for once in the world, it was in the money. And so that swap was, at the time, say, worth $5 benefit in GRU customers' favor. And we know Fed rate policy, they had already declared interest rates were going to increase, and the interest rates were going to increase again yesterday, so that swap that they wanted to prematurely unwind, that was in the money, anuring to the benefit of GRU customers, it would have been worth $5, it's now worth like $20 today, because interest rates have gone up twice. Mr. Benton told me that they haven't executed that transaction yet, but the fallacy of this is, you guys are, it was put in to accomplish something, and then you want to cash it out, because you guys have never seen a penny you want to go spend. It's like this cash grab, immediate gratification. So I'm not sure what's going on with, with, it's gotten really, really convoluted. You got problems at the utility, they're not able to read meters. I know Mr. Benton and Claudia are trying to do the best they can to address the problems you've made with your failed policy choices, up to and including sticking us with the, the biomass contract, Mayor Poe. But this thing, you're going to enter more variable-rate debt. You know, just, I applaud you at the time, when interest rates are historic low, one and done, fixed-rate debt like a mortgage, you have to do it. Yeah, whatever, I see what they're trying to do, they're trying to take a million here and a million there, and that's commendable. But in a day, this stuff has gotten so convoluted that even smart people can't figure it out. I know y'all can't figure it out, because y'all...
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Got us in this mess.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Martinez? Mr. O'Brien?
Aye. Brian O'Brien, for the record, thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on this. I apologize for not having studied this item on swaps, but given the time that we've spent over the past four years studying every detail of these comprehensive annual financial reports, I, I can tell you that Mr. Benton, like Nathan says, is doing his best to what amounts to balancing an elephant on a pinhead. This, the debt of the city of Gainesville and GRU combined is $2.7 billion, and, and that amount of debt exceeds what a normal debt would be for a town of this size by multiples. It, it's just about unthinkable, the amount of money that you have borrowed, and, you know, this is, this is not going to resolve. It'll take a minimum of 30 years, probably more like 40 years, to pay off the incredible millstone that you've hung around the necks of the folks in Gainesville. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Okay, then we'll move back to the commission, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sacco is absent. Commissioner Hayes Santos?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Aye.
And Mayor Poe?
All right, that motion passes unanimously with one absent. Before the next item? Okay, good, Madam Clerk?
Okay, our next item is the second reading of Ordinance 2022-758, ordinance changing the method of calculating commissioner salaries, and ordinance of the city of Gainesville, Florida establishing a population-based formula for calculating commissioner salaries similar to the state statute governing county commissioner salaries, removing current provisions regarding salaries in Chapter 2, Article 2 Code of Ordinances, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause or appealing clause, and an immediate effective date.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Hayes Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move Ordinance 2022-758 on second reading by title only.
Motion second, that we adopt the proposed ordinance. Over to you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Nathan Scott?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Nathan Scott. Tone death comes to mind. You've heard numerous people say that this is not the right idea, that this should be sent to the voters for approval, and you just have petulant little children with absolute political power pushing something through, to the detriment of the taxpayers, to the detriment of GRU customers that can't afford their bill, on top, doubling your salary effectively, on top of the 9.6% automatic increase that you guys are getting pursuant to the ordinance that the former mayor, Peggy and Hannah ran put in place. Your employees did not get a 9.6% increase, nor did they get their salaries doubled. Our dedicated law enforcement officers, two of, fine, which are in the room today, are not seeing their salaries doubled, yet they are out dodging bullets in all the homicides, the shootings, and the violent crime. Our dedicated firefighters and first responders aren't getting their salary doubled. So you talk about equity, again, more your own hypocrisy, commissioners, hypocrisy, utter hypocrisy. There is a strategic plan that you guys have put in place with funding priorities. There's not enough funding to fund all those priorities, but yet, out of the blue, Commissioner Hayes Santos says, we must do this now, right after the election. We must do this now, superseding and taking to the top of the list everything in your strategic plan that you talk about, all your funding priorities, to create an unfunded salary increase for the city commission, who in the real world would not get a raise. You would be fired for gross negligence, fired for incompetence, and fired for failure to provide effective... to provide effective management oversight over your entire tenure. You have 5,600-plus GRU customers that are getting estimated billing readings, you have adverse state audit findings, you've got material weaknesses in city finance that happen during all your terms, especially the ones that are pushing this forward. And Commissioner Ward, you're going to be the little toking no vote here, but you're going to benefit from it. Are you going to give back your salary, put your money where your mouth is, if you're so opposed to this? Please let us know, because I'd like to know what your position is. Well, I don't support it, but I'm going to benefit from it. That's about as shallow as hell. So the bottom line here, Mayor Poe, is this is wrong, it's abuse of power, it's fiscally irresponsible, it supersedes your strategic plan, and you guys are engaging in just selfless, senseless self-serving behavior. It's like pigs feeding at a trough. Say no, send it to the voters.
Thank you.
If you want a raise, send it to the voters. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Debbie Martinez. I just want to preface my comments, that it seems like ever since Mr. or Commissioner Harvey Ward decided to run for mayor, he seems to vote no when the Commission majority is planning, has the votes to move something through, even though, previous to his vote, he championed all of those initiatives. Residents are outraged by your proposal to nearly double your pay. Unfortunately, unlike the school board and county commission, you pulled the plug on the call-in phone line, so people who are unable to attend the meetings in person will not be able to speak during this meeting today. So much about equity. This is not the first time that members of the Gainesville City Commission tried to turn public service into a career opportunity. You claim you are overworked, that many of you have created more work for yourselves by trying to solve the problems of the county, the state, the country, and even the world. Your pay is already in line with other city commissioners and the state. I would like to read a short excerpt from an email sent to you by Ms. Tana Silva. You probably saw the Main Street Daily News article quoting previous Gainesville mayors saying, being on the commission is not a full-time job or a career path. I went to Charlotte Airport Saturday on my way home. The mayor there was greeting, had a greeting about it being one of the five fastest-growing large cities in the country. By chance, I later ran across this article about Charlotte City Council getting pushback for approving a pay raise last year over the objections of even some commissioners who contend it will attract people as a career, not civic duty. Charlotte City Council members will see their pay rise 50.8% from $21,646 to $32,638. They still make less than Gainesville commissioners do now, although Charlotte has six times Gainesville's population, five times the land area, and more diverse population, 67% higher median income, and less than half the poverty. No way does the Gainesville City Commission need or deserve the pay raise you're proposing, especially with the pain commission decisions have inflicted on GRU customers and property owners, and the long-term consequences of the outsized debt and debt service for the next 30 years at best.
Thank you so much.
Further, the mayor has no more authority or substantial responsibilities than commissioners beyond chairing, commission meetings, and signing documents. I hope enough of you will reconsider your votes.
You are preventing the orderly running of this meeting. I need you to conclude your comments.
Will and reject it.
Thank you.
This unfounded thing.
Thank you. I need to treat every citizen the same. I need, I need, I need the outbursts to stop, Ms. Martinez. I need to treat every citizen the same. I'm not going to give anybody any privileges that any other citizen does not have. Madam Clerk?
Here's Mr. O'Brien.
I don't even know what to say. You're talking about giving yourselves a raise, and what you don't talk about is you don't tell the folks at home that one of the mechanisms you have to rig up to do this is you have to change the city codes. The city codes specifically prevent you from giving yourself a raise, and there's a reason that they were written like that, for fear of a bunch of self-serving leeches get elected and then give themselves a raise. That'd be Chapter 2, Article 2, Code of Ordinances. And you are going to remove parts of the city codes that prohibit this type of thing so that you can pull this caper. Well, you think you're real smart. I'm shocked that the residents aren't down here pulling the cladding off this building. To, to think that you're going to give yourselves a raise is horrifying. The thing that strikes me the most, being a math person, is there are no numbers attached to this item. A person at home trying to follow along with the meeting wouldn't even be able to tell what you were going to give yourselves in the way of a raise. All by design, that's how you run your life. Your whole life is a lie, it's like the Truman Show. Now, and you say you want to do the formula based on commissioner salaries similar to the county commissioners. Well, there's a reason that, that they're different. You're not a county commissioner, you never will be, because you're such a failure, but it's just really demoralizing. My friend Jen Powell was the one who pointed out that this is really demoralizing to city staff, the hard-working people of GRU and general government. You had a bunch of nice folks from the new finance department here this morning, and they're telling you they're going to work overtime to try to straighten out your mess, but you're not giving them this type of raise. There's no wonder nobody wants to come work for the city. It's a terrible environment, the boss is gaslighting you. David Areola was giving comments out on the front porch, and I, I attempted to, to observe and watch, and I was gaslighted by Adrian Hayes-Santos himself, right in front of the security guard. He approached me with those eyes all wild and started closing in on my space. He's trying to get me to react so you can trespass me out of here.
Thank you so much, Mr. O'Brien.
That's not going to happen, Poe.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Speaker is Annette Armstrong.
Hi, my name is Annette Armstrong.
Just trying, if you just pull the mic down, so, there you go, thanks.
Are you saying I'm short?
No, why not? We just want people at home building here.
Vertically challenged. I've never been here before, I left work because I feel very passionate about the salary vote that you guys are imposing, but first, I want to give a message that Nathan would like me to share. The charter requires commission supermajority to put something to the vote. It puts it on the ballot. You are doubling your salary on a majority vote, bypassing the voters. I agree, we should be able to vote on that. Now, back to, I had notes, and it was pretty much everything Ms. Martinez, Mr. O'Brien, and Mr. Scott has said, so I'm not going to repeat that, because, you know, it's kind of like a parent talking to a teenager, you hear the same thing over and over. But I would like to say, as a servant to the community, as a nurse, and we have law enforcement here, our chief of police, they're also servants. I honestly am underpaid, but I love what I do, so that's why I do it. These guys do what they do because they love it. They are underpaid, you have hamstring their ability to do their job, because y'all, in your infinite wisdom, think you can run GPD as well as GRU. Well, we have seen that you have been fiscally irresponsible with GRU and unknowledgeable about running GPD. Let Lonny do his job, let these officers protect themselves. They're short-staffed, I can go on and on, but we're talking about your salary. Do your job, I'll do my job, let them do their job, but we get paid what we're worth, and you're not worth doubling your salaries. You know that. You mentioned earlier you work 50, 60 hours a week at this job. I, I don't see how it's benefited this town, that 50, 60 hours. Are you just coming up with ideas on how to be more fiscally irresponsible with my money, with their money? We all are paying. My daughter is a single parent, she's a law enforcement officer, has two kids. Her bill, she just got an email that her bill is going to be $500 next month, because it's estimated. Guess how much overtime she has to work to not have her utility turned off, or fortunately has parents that help out? She's not alone, there's a lot of them. There's a lot of people out there that are strapped. The cost of groceries have gone up, insurance has gone up, and then we've got GRU who are estimating our bills. That's not right. If you can double your salary, you can get GRU to hire enough people to go out there and read the meters. I'm going to stop now, I've got 18 seconds, but I'm going to get Irish on this, so I'm just going to step down now, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Angela Castile?
Honestly, do you guys really deserve the raise that you're going to give yourself? You haven't listened to the community on multiple issues. You can't even give the workers at GRU a raise like you're giving yourselves. Do you honestly believe that you deserve it? Furthermore, I have to ask if, well, I need clarity on this one thing. It says, providing a repealing clause and providing an immediate effective date. Is that talking about your raise, effective immediately, or is it going to go to next October? So, aside from that, I do have to ask also, only because I heard something else, and I know it probably doesn't even have anything to do with your raise, but are you guys taking to Thailand? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tyler Forrest.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mr. Mayor. First, thank you, Commissioner Chestnut and Commissioner Areola, for coming to the CLC spaghetti dinner. We were able to donate hundreds of toys to the H judicial circuit, which are going to families all across multiple counties, including Latuah. We were also able to donate about 20 pounds of food to this Meals on Wheels program run out of the senior center. Surprisingly to many, I'm actually speaking in support of this motion. I expect you to work as many hours as it takes to get your job done. You are salaried employees, as am I. Some days, that may mean you work a little less than 40, and sometimes you work a lot more than 40. That's just the job you sign up for, as you all understand. And sometimes that means going to things that are not during working hours, like a spaghetti dinner. Yeah? Even though you're not making policy, you're showing support in our community. And that's outside of working hours, and frankly, I do kind of expect you to make an appearance every now and again, right? Also, I want to point out that this is, you are not voting, if I'm correct, on a numbers to raise your salary to a certain number, you're linking it to a state formula that is used to set the county commission salaries, coincidentally, which are also increasing along with the formula. And the formula is based on population. Funny story, I actually was talking to my mom about this, and as you can imagine, based on the framing, she was a little concerned. So I said, well, what do you think the mayor makes? She thought you made $100,000 a year. So, from that baseline, she was concerned, but that's not the case. In fact, you're probably among some of the lowest-paid city employees. And again, that's not justification for paying you less, that's justification for paying your city employees more, right? So, I'm for raises for everybody. I don't want you to punish people with their salaries, I want you to reward people for their work. And as Commissioner Chestnut pointed out at the last meeting, by having a low salary, you create an elitist system. And if you need evidence of this, look at the state legislature, where the salary is so low, you either have to be retired or rich to run for it, and we see the policies that have come out of there that have not been benefiting working people, because working people aren't making those policies. It's only the rich and the wealthy, because they're the only ones that can afford to do that job, because the pay is kept artificially low in order to secure that kind of ecosystem and make sure that those are the people that continue making our policies. So, I ask you all to support this motion. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? That's it, okay, thank you so much, all for sharing your thoughts with us. We'll move back to the Commission, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Ward?
No.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco is absent, Commissioner Duncan Walker?
No.
Commissioner Areola?
Commissioner Hayes-Santos.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
Aye, that motion passes 4-2, with Duncan Walker and Ward in dissent. Next item, please.
Our next item is the second reading of Ordinance 2022-617, revisions to Chapter 14.5, titled Miscellaneous Business Regulations of the City Code of Ordinances, adding Article 9 Fair Chance Hiring and amending Chapter 2, Section 2-339, titled Applicable Codes and Ordinances, listing Article 9 of Chapter 14.5. And Ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending Chapter 14.5 of the Code of Ordinances relating to miscellaneous business regulations by adding Article 9 Fair Chance Hiring, providing findings of facts and definitions, enumerating fair chance hiring practices, setting forth administration penalties, data, and reporting, and amending Chapter 2, Section 2-339 of the Code of Ordinances relating to civil citation, applicable codes and ordinances, adding Article 9 of Chapter 14.5 to the list of ordinances enforceable by the procedure described in Division 6 of Article 5, Chapter 2, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause or appealing clause and an immediate effective date.
Okay, thank you. I'm so thrilled to be at this point, this has been quite a journey, and I really want to go back several years. I feel like this journey started with our discussion around the city's use of sort of prison labor or incarcerated labor. And we had a very, you know, robust and ultimately fruitful community conversation, and chose to end our use of incarcerated labor, which by the way, when people look at the increases in our budget, that was a big, big reason that we saw a massive jump in our city budget, sort of in one fiscal year, because we started taking those jobs internal to the organization. But then that continued with our efforts with Mayors for a Guaranteed Income, which was a partnership with Community Spring, and some incredibly exciting data is coming back from that program, not just here in Gainesville, but nationally, for all of these pilot programs. And then Max and the fellowship cohort approached about getting this fair chance hiring ordinance passed. And I will say that Max and I had many conversations, I think somewhat laced with a bit of anxiety of can we get this done, you know, by the end of, end of our terms, because I didn't want to have to sort of start from scratch, you know, all over again. So I'm, I'm so excited that on my very last meeting as mayor, we get to vote on the second reading of this ordinance. This will have a tremendous impact on our community, certainly from the side of folks that are just trying to get a job and trying to get a fair interview and a fair shake. But it's also going to be excellent for our businesses, who will get a much-needed expansion of the labor pool, and get significantly more highly qualified, talented people, from which to fill out the ranks of their, of their job openings. And so this is one of those win-win-win situations for our community, and I'm just so grateful, I'm so filled with gratitude for Community Spring and the fellows who helped champion this, and, you know, and I really helped educate the commission, helped educate the business community, so everyone understood that, hey, everybody benefits from doing this, and we're going to be a better, stronger, more prosperous community at the end. So thank you, thank you, thank you, I really appreciate it. And I'm just curious if anybody would like to have the honor of moving the ordinance. Go ahead, Commissioner Areola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll gladly move that.
Second. Okay, a motion in a second that we adopt the proposed ordinance on second reading by title only. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank everyone who's been involved in this at our first meeting about this. I think I sat with Mr. Tipping and Ms. McKnight out front at the painting tables here before we were, while we were not able to have meetings inside the building. And I appreciate your hard work, and I'm looking forward to what it will offer to the community. You know, I talked to business owners, I talked to the Chamber of Commerce. People had reservations, but generally speaking, it was, it's just been very well received. And that speaks to how well you all have put it together, how well you've spoken with the rest of the community about it. It is a thing that without, without doing the groundwork, could not have been well-received by the community. But you did the groundwork, and you talked to people, and it shows, and I'm thrilled to be able to be a part of it. Thank you for your work.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Community Spring. I just simply want to keep my comments brief by saying you are powerful, and I appreciate the work that you do to change lives. It's a privilege for me to support you in this effort, and I look forward to the things that you'll do in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, we'll open it for public comment.
Mr. Nathan Scott. Ms. Martinez. Mr. O'Brien. Max Tipping.
All right. Well, thank you all. Thank you all for your kind words. My name is Max Tipping. I'm the Policy Director at Community Spring. I know that there's a lot on the agenda, so I'll also be brief. But I wanted to just mainly say thank you to you, Mayor Poe, and each of you Commissioners for the leadership that you've shown on this and your true willingness to try to find meaningful solutions to structural problems that exist in the community. It does not go unnoticed. It is very valuable, and I'm very proud to be in Gainesville today, because this is something that really means a lot. It's going to mean a lot, not only to people with records, it's going to mean a lot to businesses. And I think it's just, this is one of those kind of rare moments where I think, as you said, it's kind of a win-win-win, where I think a lot of people can see the value in this. So I'd also just like to thank the city staff who've worked on this for going on maybe close to two years in terms of conversations, especially Soraya Fullston, as well as some of the folks at the Chamber of Commerce.
He just came in.
And then especially all the folks who have kind of been struggling with barriers faced from criminal records, who have given insight into this, who have helped kind of develop this policy and move it forward. That's true, especially for the Community Spring fellows who kind of brought this together back in May of 2021 and kind of started building that design. But there's lots of other folks that I couldn't even name today, but especially Ms. Tequila McKnight, who's really been the driving force from the beginning and has gotten this base from the start, and I'm very excited to see it go over the finish line today. So thank you all. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tequila McKnight.
Hello. I'm Tequila McKnight. I just want to thank everyone in the City Commissioners' office.
Tequila, will you just pull that microphone down? Yeah, just, there you go. Thank you.
And Mayor Poe, and everyone who helped make this a reality for Gainesville, the first city in the state to make this initiative for a better community. I was released in 2014, back into the community from doing four years in prison. After coming home, I was told no everywhere I applied for a job. I felt very defeated until coming to Community Spring and getting the help to get this ordinance put into motion. I definitely want to thank Max Tipping for being with me all the way from start to finish. Community Spring for being that light and hiring people from the community with no experience and giving us direction, but letting us work on what is dear to us. And this is something that is very dear to me and a lot of others right here in Gainesville. I am just very grateful, thankful, and hopeful that this will be a start for everyone, getting a chance at a sustainable income and opportunities for employers as well as employees. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. All the rest of you are just here for moral support. Show off those sweet shirts, too.
Well, just again, we're so proud of the work that you've done, and today is really, there will be a before and after, and this will be the point, right? It will be an absolutely different environment, different community, with a whole different set of hopes after we pass this. So just again, thank you so much, and it was just an honor to be working with you. I've made some friends out of it, which is something that'll take long past this job. With that, Madam Clerk, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hayes Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco is absent, and Mayor Poe.
Aye. Passes unanimously, one absent. Thank you. Sorry, guys, sorry. No cheers or cheers. I should have reminded you, because y'all knew, we're not allowed cheers and cheers in the chamber. I know it's hard, right outside, whoop it up. I have to be consistent for half a more meeting. This guy's a job. Okay, Madam Clerk, our next item, please.
Okay, our next item is the first reading of ordinance 2022566, petition LD22-000089, City of Gainesville applicant request to amend the City of Gainesville outdoor lighting to include FDOT standards. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending Section 30-2.1 and Section 30-6.12 of the Land Development Code relating to lighting standards, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
All right, and we have Dan Zhu with us, but Mr. Person's asked if he could introduce you, because I think this might be your first time presenting to the commission, and so he wanted the honor of being able to introduce you to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Andrew Person's special advisor to city manager. I did, this is my favorite part of the job, is getting to introduce awesome new staff. Dan came to us from Marion County about a year ago. She has a doctorate from the University of Florida in urban and regional planning. She's a wonderful addition to sustainable development, and this is her first presentation to the commission, although she's been doing quite a bit of work over the last year. This is one of the opportunities to improve our lighting ordinance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Dan Zhu, a planner with Sustainable Development. I'm presenting LD22-000089, lighting standard updates. Outdoor lighting has been receiving a lot of attention from our citizens and stakeholders. During the July commission meeting, staff were instructed to prepare a preliminary lighting study to include FDOT standard. Here is some useful terminology. First, we have food candle, which is the unit of illuminance, and the illuminance is the density of light on the surface. And then we have lumen, which is the total amount of light emitted in all direction. And finally, we have the uniformity ratio. It basically explains how even the light is. It can be easily explained through this image. The image in the center has a poor uniformity ratio, where we see dark patches and light patches, versus the image on the right has a good uniformity ratio. The light is even throughout. This slide shows us the area of useful light. The area being highlighted is the focus of this study. Next, let's take a look at the site photos. The first site we have here is on Archer Road, directly facing the Wawa gas station. We can see from the image, the pedestrian area is very, very dark when there are no traffic driving by. The food candle ranges from 0.4 to 1.6 when directly under the light pole. The second site is in the college park area. The food candle ranges from 0 to 3.1. The unevenness of the light can easily make the pedestrians feel unsafe. And the third one here is the corner of University Avenue and Main Street. There are a lot of light poles in that area, but not all of them are turned on. As a matter of fact, the downtown area is relatively bright, with an average food candle of 4.4. So in order to improve the lighting condition in Gainesville, staff make some recommendations. Staff is recommending to include the definitions of pedestrian and pedestrian area to the Land Development Code. In addition, staff would recommend to include the pedestrian area lighting levels in terms of average horizontal illuminance and uniformity ratios for U1 to U3 and any residential development. U4 to U7 and any mixed-use development. U8 to DT and any commercial development. Last but not the least is about the alley lighting. Staff is recommending to include the average horizontal illuminance and the uniformity ratio for residential development, mixed-use development, and commercial development. All these recommendations were based on the reference like FDOT Green Book, federal pedestrian lighting primer, and the various jurisdiction lighting ordinance. So with that, I would like to conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Zhu. Dr. Zhu, sorry. Commissioner Hayes Santos.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your work on this. I'm glad we're moving this forward. I do have one question. I mean, this, we talked about having a preliminary kind of changes that we could do quickly, because there's development happening all the time, and then having kind of a longer look where we can create one that better fits for the city. What's the timeline on that second portion?
So for the second portion, I wasn't heavily involved with the Kimberly-Hore lighting study. I would defer that to Mr. Knight from Public Works.
Yeah, so that study?
You gotta come, yeah. We can hear you, but people at home wouldn't be able to, so yeah, we'll just get you, pull that up a little bit.
Good afternoon, everyone. So that study is almost complete. We're waiting on some finishing touches on it, so we expect to have a report within a few weeks. And then from there, we'll be looking, comparing what the study has to what we're doing now and see what else we need to do in terms of additional changes.
All right. Then I move ordinance 2022-566 on first reading by title only.
Motion in a second that we adopt a proposed ordinance on first reading. Anybody sign up to speak to this? I think they all left. Okay, then we'll come back for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Duncan Walker. Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Hayes Santos. Commissioner Chestnut. Mayor Poe.
Aye.
Thank you.
That motion passes unanimously with one absent. All right, up now, we have Commission Comment. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. One, when we adopted or accepted the consulting contract for Johnson Consulting, this is the group that is responsible for the East Gainesville Sports Complex. They offered an option for a traffic study, and we did not take that option. So I'd like to move that the commission direct staff to amend the contract with Johnson Consulting to include a traffic component with the feasibility study for the East Gainesville Sports Complex at Eighth Avenue and Waldo Road.
Okay, motion in a second that we ask to amend that contract to include the traffic study. Before I go to Commissioner Ward, Madam Manager, did you have any thing you wanted to?
No, sir, this is acceptable.
You're good, okay, very good. Commissioner Ward.
Mr. Mayor, certainly in support of the motion, but I would also like to make sure that we try to reach out to FDOT and see if we can cost share, if at all possible.
Yes, and I think that the chair, the outgoing chair of the MTPO, will be writing a letter to FDOT and Representative Henson to ask for their assistance in looking at a feasibility study on Waldo Road. So thank you.
Commissioner Ariola, was it on this topic?
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to mention that. Excellent addition, because what we're looking at is also traffic calming measures to really slow down the speedway that Waldo Road has become. So this is, this is an excellent addition.
Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, what is estimated cost of the study?
I don't know at this time. We'd have to come back.
Okay, so that amendment will come back to the commission.
Yeah, the amendment.
But I just wanted to...
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, most likely not, I don't think.
No, most likely not, but I just wanted to get it on the table.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Next item.
Next item is perhaps not as easy as that one. This is on the GRU. And we've been hearing a lot, Mr. Manager, about the people who've been not receiving GRU bills. I've been answering lots of letters to us about that. So I was wondering if you could bring us up to date and tell us what, how you're, what people can expect for how you're handling it.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, so we are in an unfortunate situation. There have been some bills that we have not been able to get out to customers. So I'm going to, I'm going to give a little bit of history and then work up to what we're doing today. So kind of history-wise, we have an older billing system. It's really out of date. It was implemented in 2007, and all of us that use technology know older technology, there's some challenges and limitations with it. The good news on that is that we're in the middle of an implementation of a new billing system that is slated to go live in April. So when you put in a new billing system, it's actually a very long process, you know, as much as a year or more. And so we're in the middle of that, and we're on track to go live in April. So that's, that's the good news. The challenge is where we are today, and I'll talk a little bit more to that. The other challenge is, the challenge with getting the bills out is really linked to also the ability to read the meters in a timely manner. So a lot of utilities read meters monthly, some utilities read meters every other month. We have always read meters monthly. As we've come out of really the pandemic and different challenges, and I say this, you know, I think it's important for all of us to know, customers to know, I'm not making excuses, I'm simply trying to give the context of where we are. But as we came out of the pandemic, the labor market really changed. Salaries started moving around, people started moving around to different places. We've talked about the Great Resignation, and so a lot of those challenges with labor became very unpredictable, and they continue to be pretty unpredictable. And so with the labor market where it is and some of those changes, we've had a significant challenge hiring and retaining meter readers. And the meter readers, you know, are the folks that literally go out there every day, and they're walking around typically around 10 miles a day, reading each and every meter. And oftentimes, a resident may have a gas meter, electric meter, water meter at that location. And so that labor shortage and the challenge with the turnover in those meter readers led us to a place this summer where we were making decisions, and I made a decision, I've referred to it as between two rotten apples, you know, two bad choices. But one of the decisions that I had to make this summer and chose to make was, do we let billing cycles go longer so that folks are getting 36, 37, 38-day bills, which are then larger single bills? Or do we allow the system to estimate some meter reads and then get a real read the next month and true it up? And so that was a decision that I made in the summer to do some of that estimated reads with the hope that we were going to be able to staff up, and that was going to be a short-term thing, and then we'll get back to reading every month. We continued to struggle with some of the labor shortage issues. And so I'm going to pause for a second and just say, the long-term fix for that is in the works as well with our AMI system, advanced metering infrastructure. That really is going to no longer have the need to have the meter reader by foot reading meters. But I will also say the implementation of an AMI system, just about every utility faces this, is your meter readers are less apt to stay, and it's hard to retain a meter reader when they know their job is eventually going away. And so that was an additional challenge that is, all utilities kind of face that as they're in the middle of, the midst of an implementation like that. So all of that to say, those estimated reads have led to what's called meter locks. And so what happens in the billing system is, as you get an estimated read, the billing system looks at that read, compares it to like other reads, the previous reads, and it may lock the bill from going out. The purpose of that is actually a really good purpose. The purpose is, is so that we're not overcharging customers, we're not... We're not sending out a bill that is not, that is not accurate and it's overcharging the customer. So it locks the bill. The challenge with that is that then that requires a manual, a physical person to go look at that bill, look at the challenges that are in the bill, and resolve it, and then release the bill out to the customer. It is typical in a utility, including GRU, where you have some of these every single month, and we have staff that are looking at those. They're called implausibles. We look at those implausibles, we then either fix them or release them the way they are if they look accurate. With these estimated reads and what has happened through the summer into the fall, we have just gotten an excessive amount of these types of meter locks. And so we're right now at a point where we have meter locks that are holding up bills going out to customers. So let me talk about what we're doing about that now. So that's kind of what gets us to now. So what we're doing about that now is a couple of things. One is, we're looking at, even though it's an older billing system, are there things we can automate in there to review those bills and release them instead of manually looking at them? And, and to be clear, you've heard some numbers today, the number changes every day, but it is in the thousands. There's thousands of these, so it's, it's not just a handful. There are quite a few. So we're looking at automated scripts to go through these and then release them, but again, with the intent that we're releasing after they've been analyzed with that script. What we're also doing is two things. Let's go back to the meters for a second. We are working to move folks from within GRU. A lot of meter readers, a lot of employees at GRU are ex-meter readers, so they move to other departments. We are now pulling some of them back to reading meters so that we're no longer estimating. And I think the good news is December 5th was the last day we estimated meters. We haven't estimated any since then, but it has required the reallocation of, of resources from a lot of different areas to, to do that. And we're still kind of keeping up. We've got a schedule this weekend of folks coming in this weekend to keep up and do that. So we are kind of stopping the bleeding from that standpoint of those, of the meter reads. And then on the, the chunk of bills to analyze, again, we're reallocating resources. This isn't, that's not an easy thing to do. You know, the person really has to have experience in the billing system, experience with bills, have an understanding. And again, we have folks that have moved to different positions. We're moving them back and getting them in to help with the load. And then we're also talking to other firms that can help us potentially write other scripts or other things to, to reduce that load. And then every other day, we're just kind of reporting on what's our progress, where are we, are we moving it in the direction to, to lower it? The last thing I will just say along those lines, while reiterate, both of these issues that I'm bringing up are, we do have long-term plans for, but we're just not there yet. I think that's a really good thing. The other thing is, is we've tried to communicate with customers as much as possible what is going on. The probably most effective way that we have found to communicate is customers that voluntarily choose to give us their email addresses, we email them directly and provide information, frequently ask questions, things of that nature. And what we have found in those, you can actually see that people open those, and almost two-thirds of the people that we email, we emailed about 50, 55,000 people, about two-thirds of them opened that email. So those folks got a, you know, a proactive understanding of what that is. We put up web banners on our website, social media, so we're putting, we're interacting with other media outlets, so we're trying to get the message out there of what's happening. We also respond on social media to questions and things on our Facebook page. So we're trying to communicate with customers. End of the day, a couple things. As, as bills, if bills are going late, you may get bills very close to one another. And I just want to encourage customers, if that happens, please call customer service, 352-334-3434. We, we're not going to charge late fees, we're suspending those, and we can work with you on payment plans or other things, knowing that this is extremely inconvenient to have bills come, you know, you didn't get a bill, and then all of a sudden you might get one, two bills close to one another. So we understand the challenge of that. Again, I just want to let the commissioners know, we are trying to do absolutely everything we can. This is not acceptable in my mind in terms of how to operate as a, as an organization, and we're trying to get it back on track.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, if I could follow up?
Of course.
Well, it sounds to me like you have a really emergency system, problem here. And I'm just wondering if there are external controls, are external companies that you could hire on, on an emergency basis to help you through this? One of my friends received a letter from you on what was happening with the bills, which was, which was very, very proactive. And that's good, but I'm just wondering how we can get more meter readers on, in the system immediately.
So.
Because this is an emergency.
Yes, so we, and we are treating it as an emergency. Met with HR this morning. HR is continuing to help us to try to get resources in. They, they have been working on getting, getting more meter readers in, getting them screened, and doing that more quickly. And so they're aligning more to make some of those improvements and get, get folks in the door more quickly. We are also, we have looked at a couple of different companies that do meter reading, so external, and so we, we're getting quotes, and it's probably likely we, the first of the year, we'll be able to bring in sort of external resources that will, that will do the meter reading. What they do, I think primarily, I'm not positive, I know some of them do this, they basically, they do this in other communities, but they'll come in, they'll hire local labor, but they'll be, that is all they're doing, and they're doing it every day, and they just make sure they're keeping the resources that we need available. So they'll be doing that, but they're basically, will be responsible for having, you know, X number of resources available every day to read meters for, you know, 10 hours a day or whatever it is. So we are doing that, and then I kind of alluded to it, but from the, on the technology side, the partners that are helping us implement our billing system, we're working with them to see if there's anything to do in the old billing system that we can more quickly turn, turn those over.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you're taking some of those steps. The one thing I haven't heard, and I think, I mean, you mentioned, this is gonna, the position is gonna get harder and harder to fill as AMI, and we get closer, and it's really is a temporary position. I, I think we should increase the pay for that position to be able to get people to stay there. It's, it's, this issue is only going to get worse and worse as we get closer and closer to willing out AMI. So I, going out and paying an external firm is going to cost a lot of money, so I think we should at least, at the very beginning, I think we should do that too, but we should increase salaries now. I think it's worth the, the budget increase. I mean, we are spending, I'm sure, a lot of the customer service, our people calling, I mean, there's a lot of extra things, this is, this is causing extra dollars, pulling people from other groups. So I, I think we should spend the extra money, and this is a, it's a relatively temporary thing because positions are temporary in nature anyway. Where are you on, on that? Because I, I would strongly support that, and I've put a motion forward that I think that's what we should do. I want to see what your thoughts are.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mayor, so that was a discussion that we've been having with our Human Resources Department as well, of how to do that. There's a contract implication to it, but we, that is something they are evaluating right now to see if there's some changes we can make there. We've, we are bringing them in now in the first quartile of, of the pay range, so that, that is a little bit of an increase of where it was before, but we're evaluating right now what else, what else option there is in going further and, and how that interacts with the contract and whether this is like a defined emergency and things of that nature.
I mean, that's, that's one of the things I have on the list was, I mean, is this, I, I think we are in an emergency area by just not being able to do this and just implement the, the raises on, on the contract. And so I, I guess I'll move, I mean, I move that, that, that GRU implement raises for the, the positions so that it is enough to be able to keep enough employees to be able to do the job.
I'll second it. Would you add, would you consider adding, I want to add, the, looking at hiring the external third party?
Yes, I think looking at that as well, but I, I think, we need to do both, though. Yeah.
Yes, we need to.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. I do have an opinion, but first, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I support the motion. I, 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 I'm not sure about the, the detail of the motion and, and how we get there, but essentially what we're doing is authorizing the general manager to alter the budget, and I'm entirely supportive of that. Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut, for, for bringing this up. I appreciate it. I will tell you all that I, watching at home, I, I've spoken with Mr. Cunningham, and I know several, you have as well, several times about this, about the, about the third email that, or phone call that I got about it, I realized this is not isolated, and, and we talked on the phone, and we've talked since then at length about exactly the same thing that, that we shared here. Normally, it's not the thing that, that a, it's, it's absolutely not the, the sort of thing that a private company would have a public discussion about. So this is, is one of the benefits of, of having a municipal utility, is that when we have the talk, we have the talk in public, and then we, you know, we, we try to find the solutions in public with each other. And that's challenging, but it's real. I appreciate the email that went out about this. I was one of the folks who opened the email and read it. I, I'm glad that, that we did that. Whenever we have an issue, I would rather we face it directly and, and get in front of it than, than waiting to figure out how to respond to it. I'd much rather we talk about it right here amongst ourselves and, and get out in front of it like that. It doesn't make it any easier to do it this way, but at least we own it. And, and I, I'm glad that they were having the discussion. I want to have, I'll just give you a little preview, I, I would like to, in January, have some, some larger discussions about our, about how we do customer service, which has no reflection whatsoever on the people who work at GRU customer service. I just want to make sure we're giving them the best tools to be able to respond to 2023 and, and the realities of, of, of modern customer service. So, thank you, Commissioner Chestnut, thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
My comments are both separate, ma'am.
Oh, okay, go, leave your light back on quick, just so I don't forget. Thanks. Two things. One is, I'm, I'm curious whether the solution might not be hourly wage, but a longevity, longevity incentive. You know, that, that would help with retention, right? And, and that, that's, that's really, I don't know, for me, like, man, if there's a chunk waiting for me at the end, you know, that's like, whatever, that's Christmas gifts for the kids or whatever, like, you know, summer vacation, like, you can kind of look towards, so anyway, I would like to think that in this motion, that's, it's not just sort of daily rate of pay, but, but an incentive bonus as well. The other is, if, if the maker and the seconder would not mind, I, I would like this item to come back for an update to the commission on January 5th.
Oh, good.
Because I think that gives them enough time to figure out, okay, what, what can we do, what, what do we need to do? And, and that's the next meeting that the commission has. So if, if it could come back for an update on that meeting, I, I think that would be helpful for everybody. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm fine coming back for an update, but I, I do want us to not wait for, for them to implement those changes until then.
Absolutely.
And the, the intent of the motion to, to therefore, whatever is necessary to make the pay structure work and to keep, get new ones and to retain, that's what I would like for you to do. Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, go ahead.
Just to follow, so this is great. I mean, this is what, these are the discussions we've been having, and I just, I want everyone to know, you know, as a one-city, HR is, this is a priority, they're working on it, our staff, Octavia Williams and Jeremy Howard are here today. They are, this is turning over every stone, trying to address this, and so I love those ideas, those are things we've been talking about, and we will absolutely, with your direction, continue to drive stronger in that direction, so appreciate that.
Okay, so a motion to ask the general manager to, to look at some adjustments to, to paying compensation, to try to alleviate the short-term problem, and bring an update back to the commission on January 5th. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, that motion passes unanimously with Ariola and Sacco absent. Commissioner, I'm gonna go back to Duncan Walker, if that's okay. She chimed in before you, just put your light back on. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just share something with all of you that some of you may be aware of. Certainly you were apprised of the conversations that the county had been having about ability housing. I was not sure if you had had the opportunity to either see the meeting that took place a few days ago, or if you were aware, but I did want to take the opportunity to read a letter that was sent out to their CEO from the county manager because there may be some implications for us moving forward. So, sent from the desk of Michelle Lieberman, County Manager, on December 15, 2022, going to the President and CEO of Ability Housing Incorporated, Sharon Nasworth, were these words regarding Dogwood Village Apartments, Alachua County. Dear Mrs. Nasworth, Alachua County staff have been working with Ability Housing to identify and review possible alternative housing locations. To date, no sites have been located that will meet the grant requirements within the specified timeframe. This information was provided to the Board of County Commissioners for review. At the December 13, 2022, BOCC meeting, the board took the following action on the Florida Housing Finance Corporation grant to Ability Housing Incorporated Dogwood Village Project under RFA 2021 201. Motion that the board reaffirms their policy and goals that states while they support affordable housing projects, they do not support projects that further concentrate poverty within the city of Gainesville. Further, they recognize that within the city of Gainesville, 85% to 90% of affordable housing projects are located in east of Main Street. Therefore, for future projects, they will seek to locate those projects west of Main Street and follow their new guidelines passed at their September 13, 2022 meeting. Number two, staff, this is also a part of the motion, that staff continue to work with Ability Housing and the city of Gainesville, and inform Ability Housing that the BOCC cannot support a local match at this particular site for the reasons stated above and for the reasons stated in their September 19 Chair Letter to Trey Price. While the BOCC cannot support this affordable housing project at this location, they absolutely support this type of project at other locations within the city of Gainesville and the rest of the county that do not further concentrate systemic poverty and follow their policies passed on September 13, 2022. Finally, the county asks that both the county and city staff and Ability Housing come up with an acceptable and fair price to acquire the property recently purchased by Ability Housing on Southeast 15th Street. That the county send another letter to Trey Price that restates their previous objections to the project at the particular site as stated by Chair Wheeler on September 19, and further states that the specific justification of why the county would like to move the project is because both the city and the county are trying to disperse affordable housing equitably throughout the city to change decades of systemic and intentional concentrations of poverty. Therefore, to proceed with the project at that location would violate both the city and county's policies and goals to equitably disperse affordable housing in Gainesville. It further states that while this site is not acceptable for the type of project, there are other potential sites that require additional time to either source or vet that would absolutely be supported by the BOCC. While they are withdrawing their local support for the particular site, they would not withdraw other support for this type of affordable housing project that would, that is located in an area of Gainesville that properly disperses affordable housing in their, in our community, i.e. anywhere west of Main Street. Please provide both Ability Housing and the Alachua County additional time from the earlier deadline stated in paragraph nine of Ability Housing's December 9, 2022 letter. The BOCC fully endorses Ability Housing Incorporated and the future housing initiatives within Alachua County. They are committed to assisting Ability Housing Incorporated in finding a more suitable location for this proposed project and respectively request additional time to cite the project. They look forward to the opportunity to meet, to discuss this and other future housing initiatives in Alachua County. Sincerely, Michelle Lieberman, County Manager. I simply wanted to read this letter because, as you hear, the county did not support the project. And there will be additional conversations with the city, apparently, that I just simply wanted us to be, I wanted this to be on our radar. This happened a few days ago, and this conversation surely will come back before the next commission with some sort of request, so I just wanted all of us to be aware.
Thank you. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. It, it was disappointing to see that the county stopped hundreds of people from getting home. That's, that's what the county decided to do. I agree, we need to disperse housing in our community. I agree, we need to disperse housing in our community. Zoning changes how we do that. The zoning was designed to only have affordable housing in the southeast and east of our, of our city. That's why the commission tried to move to allow missing middle housing across the, across the whole city to address the issue that you brought forward. One of the issues, they, they said they can't find other places, that's because the zoning doesn't allow it in higher opportunity areas. So we have to look at changing zoning even further to allow housing throughout our, our I don't think the city should get involved. The county made a decision. If the county wants to buy the land or do whatever they need to do, that's, that's their decision. I don't think the city needs to be involved in it. From thinking back on, while I'm on the commission, I think five projects that we've supported through the, or six, five, six projects while I'm on the commission that have gotten the, the housing credits and things like that, all of them but one, the, the ones we've done at Grove, as we bought a preserve, every other one has been west of 13th Street that I can, I can think of. But I don't think the city needs to be involved in this. This is a county decision to stop people from getting homes and they need to figure out where they can find someone to, to find homes for those people. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to follow up on that. I, I, I don't want to give the impression that the city is going to provide funds for the county to relocate this project. We have a, we have our plan. We are addressing it and we're working with the, the finance, Florida Housing Finance through the, what's Malcolm Kiners? Through the Gainesville Housing Authority. We're working with them to address housing, but we do not have the funds to provide. I don't want to give the impression that we are planning to provide funds or we're waiting to provide funds and that I don't want the county to rely on the city for funding for a suitable location because we are committed to our, to a plan already to, to address affordable housing and to carry that out. I think that I commend the county for trying to address housing and I would suggest to them that they continue to pursue, but not with the thinking that the city is going to provide additional dollars to them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Ariola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only, the only thing I want to share is that I, I find it deeply offensive that Alachua County would presume to speak for the city of Gainesville's policies. We don't presume to do that. They shouldn't presume to do it either. I know that a lot of experience is coming off of this board, but that is still no excuse, absolutely no excuse. Second of all, as a voter, I am so deeply disappointed, ashamed even, that elected officials would pull funding from affordable housing. It is unconscionable, completely inconscionable. We can have our disagreements. We can have our differences. Come on, y'all. We're going to start pulling funding for affordable housing now? Is that the future of the governments? It's heartless. It's heartless. I don't think the city of Gainesville should have been anywhere near this conversation. But now that we have been brought into it, I have to say my piece. This is a very, very, very dangerous path we go down. What happens when state departments now decide? They go through all the hoops. They go through all the paperwork. They're just going to pull it at the last second. Well, we don't need to give funding to Gainesville and Alachua County. It's already hard enough to fight for funding. This is reckless. This is irresponsible. And I have to say that. It has to be said.
Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I agree with lots of things that have been said. I hope that, that we'll take care and, and I am open to ideas if the county wants to bring us an idea to put in a plan down the road. Happy to talk about that. I don't want the county, as Commissioner Chestnut warned, to, to assume that, that we've got a pot of money we're ready to write a check with. We have a process. I, I trust Mr. Harris. I trust the city manager and, and I'm sure that, that there will be housing opportunities in the future, whether that's a few months or a few years out, where we can find partnership with, with the county on things. But I do not want anybody to think that we are, that we have promised a pot of money to work with. I, I, I understand the, some of the nuance of, of what has gone on with this. We have as a priority getting affordable housing built and, and we have, I think, done a pretty good job of making sure that it is built across the community. I mean, I'm proud of, we were involved in on 53rd Avenue. We had a lot of tense discussions about the, the units that have gone in north of Royal I'm not dismissing anything out of hand, but there's a process and, and I'm, I find myself somewhere in the middle on this. So I, I look forward to finding ways for local government to create affordable housing or to be a partner and helping create affordable housing for our neighbors who need it. So to, to try to bring the temperature, you know, to a good place, let's, let, let's be clear that we're not offering a, a blank check, but that if you want, if, if the county or anyone else wants to, to make proposals and get involved in our processes, we are happy to, to build you into the discussion as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The city and the county have shown that we can partner together in, in areas of mutual benefit. I think in transportation and the micro mobility programs that we did that sort of straddled city and county lines in the eastern part of our city and county was a great example of that. We showed, but that was a very deliberate and planned process and we found the right solution, the right project for, for the mutual needs of our neighbors. To think that a single dollar of Gainesville taxpayers' money would go to prevent housing from being built is unimaginable. I, I, I just cannot wrap my mind around that somewhat less than tacit request. What I'm hearing from my colleagues up here is there's general agreement about that. You know, I think they found themselves in a sort of last minute desperate situation and are trying to throw whatever idea out there that, that might be able to get them through it. I think the simple solution is to agree to the competitive project that they already spent a lot of time and resources towards and we're, they should be proud that they won that award. And that's the thing about it. They, they won that award against a bunch of other jurisdictions that were competing for it because of its merits. So, you know, I know it's difficult, but yeah, to think that a, a, a single city dollar would go to prevent housing, affordable housing from being built is a misuse of public trust. So I, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Back to Commissioner Santos. Okay. Commissioner Duncan Walker on this item still, right?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It, it truly was not my intention to get us deeply embroiled in a conversation about the county's choice. They made their decision. I simply wanted to make sure that all of us were aware of what the decision was and that at some point in the very near future, that it's quite likely they will be coming to us. And so I'm sure that those who are listening today have had a chance to hear where you all stand, but for those of us who remain, we're probably the ones who will be involved in that conversation as it goes forward. But I certainly wanted you to know that that is what has happened. And I do look forward, as Commissioner Ward has, has mentioned, charting pathways forward. You know, as municipal governments, that's the thing. We all get to make the decisions that we make and the county chose the path that they felt was best for the county based on responses to constituents' needs and what their plans are. And we will chart that course that we see fit for the city. So I, with the utmost respect for both entities, I, I honor that. But I certainly honor even more the ability for us all to come together to address these critical needs for those who need us the most. And I think they begin with conversations just like this one. So how we begin to chart those conversations and have them in the future is something that I look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's actually another county thing. The, the county moved forward on the energy efficiency and weatherization of affordable housing program that they're using ARPA dollars and I, I commend them for, for moving forward in that program, but they exempted the city of Gainesville and said that we, people who live in the city of Gainesville are, are not eligible for those funds. East Gainesville is left out, Pine Ridge, Phoenix, and every other neighborhood in our city. And I, I think I would like for us to, and this is a program that helps rental homes if they, the, the county will help pay for the rental home to be upgraded. And if they, if a landlord takes that money, then they have to keep it affordable for a certain period of time. I think that should be available for the, the city of Gainesville, not just every other city in the, in the county and unincorporated areas. So I would like to move that we ask the mayor to send a letter for, ask the mayor to send a letter from the commission asking the county commission to, to allow, to remove that exemption and to allow those funds to also be used inside of the, and allow that program to be in the city of Gainesville as well.
Okay, motion on the second, that way I write a letter to the county. I think the simplest way to put it is that those funds can be used countywide.
Yep.
Period. Right. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, just one other. The vast majority of people who are in poverty in our community live in Gainesville. We shouldn't exempt tho, those people. And I think that should be, I think, looking at the demographics and maybe the, the manager can help and looking at where those, those numbers so that we can let the county know how many people in our city are poverty and how many people are being left out and by this decision they made. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, it's on this topic? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll support the motion. I was already planning to ask if that'd be on the, the joint city-county meeting, January 23rd, I think it is. I, I take every opportunity to remind our colleagues at the county that almost exactly half or a little more of county residents and taxpayers live in the city limits of Gainesville. You don't give up your, your rights as, as a county voter and taxpayer because you live inside the city limits. It's, it's important to continue to remind our colleagues across the street of that because I'll promise you, our colleagues in other smaller cities remind them of that all the time. So we, we need to, to, to provide that advocacy as well. And as Commissioner Santos pointed out, I, I was doing some, some stats work last week and, and noticed, was reminded, didn't notice, but I was reminded that while about 29% of Gainesville inside the city limits lives in poverty, the report for Alachua County is 17%. It's not that they're doing things different, it's just that's where the lines are drawn. When you include Hale Plantation, you include parts of Jonesville in the statistics, the averages change remarkably. So it's important to remind our colleagues at the county that we are in fact responsible, directly responsible for our sisters and brothers who are living in poverty to a greater degree than the county at large is, just because of where the lines are drawn. And, and this speaks directly to that. Again, I support the motion, but I've already been intending to have that on the, on the agenda. So, thank you.
All right. Excellent. Let's give them a little heads up. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. We've reached the end of our business this afternoon. Tonight, we have only one item on our agenda. That is our side die ceremony. For those not familiar, this is a, an opportunity for old has-beens like the three of us and Commissioner Ward, to a lesser degree, although he'll be sticking around for at least four more years, to share some remembrances and recollections. I think it will also be a exercise in how many times we can make the mayor cry in a, in defined period of time. It's already happened twice today. So we invite anybody that would like to come and participate in that ceremony. Just to kind of give you an idea, we're going to hear from our neighbors and members of the public and we'll hear from our charter officers. I think there's been a video that's been prepared. And then we'll hear from commissioners and close by Commissioner Ariola, Commissioner Santos and myself, giving our own comments. And that will be the end. Commissioner Ward, unfortunately, or fortunately, will not be with us tonight. He is doing the city's business elsewhere and we're thankful and grateful for that. I'm very sad you're not going to be with us because you've been such a friend and such a great colleague that I, I'm sad I don't get to share that moment with you, but we also understand that you're doing very important work on behalf of the city and wouldn't want it any other way. Commissioner Ariola?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say, you know, it wasn't a secret that my attendance today was sort of up in the air. I just wanted to share with everyone because I know everyone was so kind and offering prayers and thoughts for my mother. She has had a successful operation. She is out now. She's in the good hands of North Florida. So just thank you, everybody. And I'm very glad I got to be here for my last meeting.
As we, as are we. We're thankful sometimes those prayers do get answered more quickly than others. With that, we will be in recess until 5:30. Okay, good evening. We're going to call this meeting back to order, and our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand if you're willing and able for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Okay, we have a nice event planned. I want to thank all the city staff that put so much effort and time into this. It's truly appreciated. This is a opportunity for reflection and thanks. And so, Todd. Oh, man, so good to see you. I've already broken down twice today, so I'm probably about halfway there. Girls, the important thing for you both to know is that when I start giving my comments, we're almost done, and then right after that, there's cookies. All right? So that's the, right. That's the important part that you all need to know. So what we're going to do is, I'll just kind of go through the program here, and then we'll take it one by one. We're going to start off with any of our neighbors or any staff that are not charter officers that would like to make any comments. And then, once we conclude that, we'll go to our charter officers. So we'll start off with neighbors and then staff, and then our charter officers, and each charter officer will have an opportunity to share some thoughts. Then we'll have a video presentation, and then we'll go to Commissioner remarks, which is, I think, Commissioner Chestnut at this point. We know that Commissioner Sacco and Commissioner Ward will not be with us, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Duncan Walker is. Yeah, for you do for Commissioner Ward, and then, I don't know if Commissioner Duncan Walker will be back or not. If she is, then we'll, of course, give her an opportunity to share some thoughts. And then we'll have closing remarks, starting with Ms. Gany for Commissioner Ward, and then Commissioner Ariola, Commissioner Hayes-Santos, and myself. And as I said, once I'm done, that will be it. We will drop the gavel one last time and eat some cookies. All right? So at this time, we'd like to invite any of our neighbors up that wish to share any thoughts with us. Just tell us who you are. Welcome.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Dylan Botner, and I just have a, want to leave a few words on the record for my friend David Ariola. The first time I connected with David was in October 2016. My first presidential election was right around the corner, and I was at a former mayor's home attending a fundraiser with Senator Bill Nelson. And I met this young guy who was challenging an incumbent city commissioner who needed help on his campaign. At the time, I was feeling good about where I was and where we were going. But when Donald Trump won in November, I grew skeptical of and disheartened by campaigning and elections in the direction our country was headed. Fast forward to election night in March 2017, it's just David and me in the D E C headquarters, we're gathered around my laptop, watching the results tell us that he'd just been elected to the city commission. In a way, that victory kept me in the fight. It showed me that campaigns do in fact matter, and that it is possible for all of us to help create the communities we want to see. Commissioner, I know you haven't always taken the most popular path, and that is okay, because this work isn't about doing what's popular. It's about doing what you know to be right and just. And specifically, I just want to say, on the issue of housing for our neighbors, I could not be more proud of you for doing the right thing for our city in spite of some passionate opposition. Not everyone can be on the right side of history, and it is what it is. We're all neighbors here. I don't know what you're going to be up to next, David, but I am a believer in omens, and if the universe introduced me to you and Bill Nelson at the same time, you are bound for the moon and beyond, my friend. I thank you for your service, along with your colleagues. Commissioner Hayes-Santos, Mayor Poe, thank you for your dedicated service. Commissioner Ward isn't here, but I look forward to his service as our next mayor. Thank you all, have a great night. Take care.
Thank you so much. And real quick, before we invite the next person up, I did want to, I meant to say at the beginning, the table up here, when I became mayor, I started getting thank you notes and letters from individuals, from organizations, and I started putting them in a file. And after a while, the file got too big, and I started putting them in a box. And so those are spread out along the table here, and it's just a fraction of all the ones that I received and kept. And so if you want, after the meeting, to just take a look, it's everything from senators and members of Congress to elementary school students in our community. And then you can see some other sort of landmark projects and things like, but anyway, that's what you see at the table up here. Okay, do we have any other neighbors that would like to share some thoughts with us? Mr. Holloway?
Wilmer Holloway. I am ecstatic. This day could not have come sooner. Can't believe what you guys did earlier, the four of you. You voted through, you doubled, you doubled the compensation. When the city employees, the cops, the firefighters, the city workers, they didn't get, they didn't get a raise, they don't have the 9% accelerator. You guys just really take the cake, and then the three of you going to Israel on our dime. Well, I hope you found a job, and I hope it takes you out of Gainesville. Good riddance and goodbye.
Thank you, and same to you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Patrick. I just wanted to say that to Commissioner Ariola, I wanted to just thank you. We met earlier this year, and one of the first things I said to you is that I feel like I'm like, I've lived in Gainesville most of my adult life, but I feel like I'm discovering Gainesville. And I'm very proud to say that I think through our friendship and everything you've taught me, that I feel like I've truly discovered Gainesville and how great of a place this is. So I want to just, you know, thank you for your service, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Man, I'm so glad you're here, Todd. Next to my mom and my family, that's what makes my day.
Well, this is a smiling face that a guy is five years sober from the commission. I just felt it was important for me to be here tonight for all three of you and for Commissioner Ward, Detective Mayor. I appreciate everything you've done. Happy to be here. Commissioner Ariola and Commissioner Hayes-Santos, I respect your service. The one thing I know is that after having done this, at the end of the day, we all share that bond, we know what it's like, and so I appreciate you. But it was most important for me to be here for the mayor, for Mayor Poe, who 12 years ago, I decided to run for office. And I remember when I first decided to run, I didn't know who I was running against, I just knew where I lived, and that's where I had to run. And I started going around the city and talking to people, and the reaction oftentimes was, who are you running against? And I'd tell them, and they're like, oh, well, he's a good guy, you know, but, you know. And I'd never heard a bad thing. And during that campaign, I never was running against Lauren Poe, I was running for myself and the things I believed in. And, you know, and I think that's important. You know, we had a lot of differences, we still do, and that's okay in the things we believe. You know, my opinion is that the majority of politics is simply the opinions that we have formed on things and the beliefs we have based on the lives we've led. And it's okay to differ, and we've all lived different experiences, and I think it's important. And I was also lucky as a young man to fly all around the world, and I've been to a lot of countries, I've been to, seen a lot of poverty, I've seen a lot of different cultures and religions, and the one common denominator that is, no matter who you are or where you live, it's the importance and the love of family that I always observed. And it's really that that I think, you know, has given me this, kind of the bond that I feel with the mayor. I know he's going to give up this title of mayor, and it's just a title, but it's nowhere near the important title that he has in his life, and that really truly is. And to sit here and see your mom here, and Adrian, Commissioner Hayes-Santos' mom, is your mom here?
She's over there right now.
Okay, well, I pray for her. And knowing my mom's probably looking down here, I just wanted to say again, I mean, I think the titles that mean the most to you, and the thing I appreciate was in order, son, husband, and father. And so, from one appreciative, son, husband, and father, thanks for your service, and I wish you and your family the very best.
Thank you, my brother.
You're welcome.
And I got to tell you, even though you licked me in that race, absolutely licked me in that race, it was the most pleasant race that I ran in of all the ones I did. I mean, it really was, we got to share our ideas. It was not acrimonious or mean-spirited or anything, and, you know, I knew that the better guy won at the end. And the cool thing is, we got to serve together for five years, I think, after that.
Well, we did. And you're, I mean, on the way out, I said I was always a fan of term limits, and I was a bigger fan of them when it applied to me, so.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Appreciate all of you, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd, I really appreciate you being here. Thank you. Anybody else, any of our other neighbors like to share some thoughts?
I will just be exceptionally brief and say thank you for your public service. We've agreed, we've disagreed, I've had fun arguing with all of you and probing issues with, whether we were on the same side or not. You know, people like you, public servants, are the foundation of our democracy. If people are not willing to serve in public service, there would be no democracy, it would be a dictatorship. And so thank you for fulfilling that essential public role in our democracy.
Thanks. Thank you for us. Howdy.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for, Ms. Poe, how you doing?
I'm wonderful, how are you?
Well, I think, sir, also you may make sure to the city of Gainesville, the streets are not being paved the wrong streets. Please make sure the city of Gainesville do that. Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Good evening, David Ruiz, I'll also be very brief. I've been in Gainesville since the summer of 2001, so I've definitely seen a lot of the different commissions. For the meetings that I can attend personally or in person, I definitely watch it online, on Facebook, whatever. But I definitely wanted to be here today for this occasion and basically thank you for your public service and for putting yourself out there, because it is not an easy job to take criticism and to, you know, be the person people have to go to with everything. But again, thank you for your service, and I definitely can't wait to see the commissioners that are staying on the board and the new ones that are coming in. But definitely thank you for your service and look forward to seeing you around.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you all for being here and for sharing your thoughts and remembrances with us. Anybody from staff that is not a charter officer wish to say anything? No obligation. Okay, then we'll go to our charter officers and start with Ms. Gany.
All right. I will keep my remarks brief, because I know there are several of us that have to speak, but I did write down a few thoughts. Perhaps the greatest motivation that drives us all who devote ourselves to public service is our love for community. Over the last five years, I've been able to work with you all, and I've witnessed the sacrifices that you all have had to make in order to do what you feel is right and best for the city, and I commend you for your commitment. Gandhi said, and I quote, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." While you're walking away from this part of your service, I know you'll never walk away from the love of community, and I wish you success as you discover the next leg of the journey. And so at this time, I would like to present to you all your official plaques of service for the city of Gainesville and a token of our appreciation from the city clerk's office. So although he is not here with us in person, I do still want to acknowledge Commissioner Harvey Ward, City Commissioner, District 2, for the years 2017 to 2020 and 2020 to 2022. At this time, I would like to acknowledge and appreciate Commissioner David Ariola, City Commissioner, District 3, for the years 2017 to 2020 and 2020 to 2022. Congratulations. You're welcome. Don't go yet. Sorry. And a token of our appreciation for your service. Thank you so much. Feel like I'm doing proclamations here. Presented to Commissioner Adrian Hayes-Santos, City Commissioner, District 4, 2016 to 2019 and 2019 to 2022, our appreciation for your service and commitment to the city of Gainesville. You are welcome. And last but certainly not least, Mayor Lauren Poe, Mayor of the city of Gainesville from 2016 to 2019 and 2019 to 2022, and you have your own gavel to take home with you. Don't use it too much on the girl. But we appreciate your service and commitment to the city.
Thank you.
And a word for your service. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gany, and to the entire clerk's staff, we've got an amazing team over there. All right, Ms. Bigby.
Thank you. We'll keep it very brief as well. Mayor Poe, we really appreciate the time that we spent with you. I've been here three years. We appreciate your service and your leadership, and I especially appreciate what you and your family gave up for you to be, serve as the mayor of the city. A lot of people maybe don't realize all the sacrifices that you made. So we have a coveted certificate of appreciation. Sometimes give our audit to you, now you get one. And it says, "In recognition for going above and beyond, thank you, Mayor Lauren Poe, to serve the city of Gainesville and support the Office of the City Auditor." And we have a bag that we use for our UF recruiting.
Very good. Thank you. And while Ms. Anderson's bringing that up, I want to congratulate Ms. Anderson. We approved her contract today for the interim auditor, and I know that she's going to do a great job in that role as we bid farewell to Ms. Bigby in a few weeks as well.
Absolutely, thank you. Commissioner Hayes-Santos, we appreciate the three years that we've spent with you. One of the things that I really appreciate about you is your kindness and your positive attitude. I think that I smile a lot, well, I think you smile more than I do. You always kept your appointments, and I just really appreciate the time and your enthusiasm about projects. You've put a lot of work into your time here at the city. So we have a certificate of appreciation for you. Yes. And then last but not least, Commissioner Ariola, we appreciate your service for the last three years, and it's so fitting that your mom is here, because one of the things I'd like to say about you is not only are you super reliable and accountable, but you are honestly the kindest man I've ever met. So I just hope that we get to see you offering future service in the city of Gainesville. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Bigby and Ms. Anderson, so much, and thank you for your service. Mr. Fullston? I know, you don't know what this is doing to my girls, all these presents all wrapped up. I'm just going to put them under the tree and leave them till Christmas. Be a big surprise, whatever.
All right. So, Zari Fullston, interim director for the Office of Equity and Inclusion. So I have a unique perspective, probably from my other charter colleagues. Several of you, I remember when you were running for office, because I was at the Supervisory Elections Office back then. So I've seen the changes in just how you look. You know.
That's not nice. Come on, this must be a nice occasion.
You know, people don't realize what public service does to you, so to have this opportunity to be on this side is very interesting to me. And having worked across the street, it's very ironic that I'm here in this role, but I want to share this with you. The city clerk afforded me the opportunity to come and work for the city of Gainesville, which I'm indebted to, and it allowed me to get a chance to work with each of you. One thing I would say about this group, whether people believe it or not, you guys have done some awesome work and projects since your time here in the city of Gainesville. Some transformational projects that when people look back on in the future, they'll be like, wow, that was the commission that worked on those projects and brought those things to our community. One of the things is that I liked about the three of you, too, you didn't mind challenging what was the status quo. You was always thinking about what could we do outside the box that could put Gainesville in a different light, not only socially, but economically as well. You were very diverse in what you chose to put forth to the commission, whether that was economic development projects, whether that was social causes, whether that was planning issues. You always had a heart for this community and seeing us be in the best light that we could be in. I'm appreciative of that. Even the projects that I was able to work on, you guys, for policy oversight, they were projects that had the future of Gainesville in mind. And so I'm always appreciative of that, because I've worked with other commissions before, and I can tell you that's not always the case. Many a times, a lot of things that you guys brought forth was about building the community and making it a better place for you to live, your kids to live, and for others to live. And this is the And this is the beautiful part about it, people that didn't look like you, people that didn't come from the same part of town as you, didn't have the same social economic status you, wasn't the same race as you, wasn't the same religion as you. You really had a heart for that, and that is evident in the projects that we've seen you do over the years, and you've been here in the city of Gainesville. I also want to share a thank you, too, because I'm in this new role because you trusted in me. You gave me an opportunity. You saw somebody who understood the need for making sure everybody's voice was included, somebody who understood that collaboration is important for us to be able to achieve the things that we needed to be able to do as a community, and somebody, unfortunately for me, who's from the community. I'm from this area. And so, I'm excited for this new opportunity that I've been given and bestowed to me by you guys, but I'm more appreciative of the opportunity to be able to serve with you guys and work with you during this time that you've been commissioners. I wish you nothing but the best. Hopefully, you're going somewhere to put your feet in the sand, to relax a little bit. But knowing you guys, you're going to be back in public service, and so I appreciate that, knowing that. If I could ever be of any small help, let me know that because I really appreciate what you've done. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity, and I'm excited to share tonight. So what I have done, my gift saying is fancy, is the clerks. And others. But I did something I think would be classic. I did something I think would be nice. Hopefully, you enjoy them, but let you know that I really appreciate you, all right?
Thank you, Zariah.
Thank you.
As well as Zariah's bringing that up, I wanted to acknowledge Casey Willetts, our District 3-elect commissioner. Thanks for being here, Casey. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Zariah. All right, Mr. Dean.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Poe, Ms. Hayes-Santos, Ms. Areola, and hopefully Commissioner Ward will have a chance to watch this when he gets home. But you have finished the race. That's appropriate. Recently, we've had calls for reflection over the past year, in the past six months or so in particular. I've probably had some form of this conversation with each of you in private, but I must say it has been a particularly intense, productive, and even occasionally aggressive time for this commission, and it's caused me to wonder, why have things been so extraordinary? And it occurred to me that it was a reflection of the unusually dense experience in terms of years in office of this board, born from the many years of service of the individual members. The seven current members of this commission have accumulated around 42 years of service, but the four of you in particular have served, I counted up, a combined 31 years. And we just, we heard the dates on the plaques. And that degree of confidence and determination that you've each displayed individually and collectively is clearly a function of those years in office for yourselves and with your peers. And Mr. Mayor, my math may be wrong, but seeing former Commissioner Chase here remind me, I think you've served with 23 different commissioners.
I will fact check that for you because I added up to. I added 22, but maybe I wasn't counting myself. But yeah. I think you're right. Yeah, we're then one, yes.
And including three other mayors in addition to yourself. And we are all shaped and defined by, I think, those we serve with, and the four of you have served together for six years, and I think you're fortunate to have served together for those six years. And I really think that's been a blessing for each of you because locally, nationally, globally, it hasn't been an uneventful time. Mr. Mayor, you took office during a historic recession. Then the four of you, along with your colleagues, you've weathered fallout from the biomass agreement and the subsequent buyout, a dreadful pandemic, the efforts at large-scale rezonings, a dramatic, maybe most difficult, just really, I think, a dramatic change in tenor of public discourse at all levels of our government. And you've led us through these things. There's never an easy time to lead, but this time, I think, has been challenging, to say the least. And it may be overly dramatic to say that this change, the, you know, the three of you leaving office and one transitioning to mayor is the end of an era, but it certainly is the end of a time. It's the end of a day. It is Saiedai. And so, each of you, Mayor Poe, Commissioner Hayes-Santos, Commissioner Areola, and Commissioner Ward, Mayor-elect Ward, I would say congratulations. Good luck in your future endeavors. And I think most importantly, thank you. Thank you to you and your families. I hope you have a wonderful holiday season and many, many happy New Years to come.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you so much. And as I said, Dan's one of those guys that's been with us for a long time, probably longer than most at the city, and so his view of the landscape is unique amongst many of our senior staffs. I appreciate you sharing that perspective with us. Ms. Curry.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Areola, Commissioner Hayes-Santos, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for your courage and your grace under pressure and under fire. You've certainly exhibited the best. I want to say, I've only been here a year, but it's been a pleasure working with all of you. Early in my career, I was blessed to have been mentored by a great local governmental official. And his name was the late Mayor Mina Jackson of Atlanta, Georgia. He was my mentor. And one of the things that he used to say was, "Politics is not perfect, but it's the best available nonviolent means of changing how we live." Mayor and commissioners, I want to take this time to thank you for taking up the mantle of producing positive change in the city of Gainesville through your time in office. And while nothing is perfect, your dedication to this community has been evident through the causes you've championed, your thoughtful deliberation of issues that were brought before you, and mostly by your resolve to do what you felt was the most beneficial for this community. You have not shied away from the tough tasks and hard decisions. You have leaned into them. And for this and for your diligent service, on behalf of the 1,400 employees that work alongside me, I want to thank each of you for what you have contributed to this city. I will end with a quote by the late Vince Lombardi. Quote, "Leaders are made, they are not born. They are made by hard effort, which is the price which all of us must pay to achieve any goal that is worthwhile." And by this definition, each of you have truly been leaders in our great city and the greater Gainesville community. Again, thank you for your service. We have some gifts that we'd like to bestow upon you. Some of them are fun. Some of them are even more fun. But the first one is for Mayor Poe.
Red Ryder.
And so, what it is, it is a Star Wars lightsaber.
No.
Because, because, yes, a Star Wars lightsaber, because we understand that you are a fan of the movies, and you did a Star Wars-related video for Gator Grom.
Yes, I did.
And, you know, you were in a Han Solo challenge on social media. Commissioner Areola, you have a solar-powered radiometer. Because solar energy was a part of your latest campaign, and this is a tiny solar-powered windmill and a light bulb-like orb.
Cool.
Commissioner Hayes-Santos, you have an origami city.
Thank you. Repeat that.
Origami city.
Oh.
Because he's very involved in city planning. Very involved. And it's basically a craft to build a city out of paper. Excuse me. So we also have, because you've served the community with distinction, each of you should be honored with your own street sign. So we have down front, we have Poe's Place. We have Ward's Way. We have Hayes-Santos Street. And we have Areola Avenue.
Awesome.
So.
You're thorough, Pari.
And you have envelopes. I would caution you not to open them, but it should make you very happy later on this evening or during the holiday.
All right.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to you.
Oh, thank you. That's so kind of you and all of those folks you represent in general government. Mr. Cunningham.
Well.
Do you want to switch orders real quick?
What do you mean?
That's hard to follow.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Being last. Well, you know, what you all know, after serving for so many years, is being a leader or being in leadership is not easy. And you often don't get accolades. When people want to come see you, they're not typically there to say, hey, I just want to tell you great things. It's typically asking you for something or asking to do something. And as many people have said here today, you've been an inspiration to me and to much of the staff of GRU because of your willingness to enter the fray and to get into those difficult things and to do those things, and really been an inspiration of how to be a great citizen. Omi mentioned community, and community is such an important part of who we are, and it's not just the streetlights, Commissioner Hayes-Santos, or the sidewalks, but it is the people. It is the people that make up who lives around you, who lives, who you go hang out when you go downtown, or when you go to different places in our community. And you all have been an inspiration of how to be a great person, to help build a community. And so, I wanted to just talk about a couple, just to name a couple of things that I just wanted to thank you for, serving in your role. So one is just your passion. Every single one of you have just an incredible passion to do a good job, to make Gainesville better, to come alongside people in our community. And that is, that passion is inspiring. All of you, I just want to thank you for, like, wanting to be the best you can be. And so, people get up and speak at meetings and they have comments, but every single one of you have a heart that wants to be the best you can be and do the best for Gainesville, and that has been apparent the whole time I've known all of you. I want to thank you this past year. We all know as charters, we're all new, we're all in our roles. You all acknowledge that, and you all stepped in to help us transition into our roles well. And I appreciate the, really, the advice and all the time you had to talk us through things that we may not be aware of. It has just been very a good comfort for you that you all have provided to us as charters. I want to thank you for challenging us, challenging me specifically. It's not this role, this year has been a very difficult year. Part of it is that you all want to challenge us as charters to do the best we can for the best product for the city. And so, I want to thank you all for doing that and your leadership. And then, and I think Dan mentioned, but your family. Family takes a big hit when you're in a leadership role. Woo, almost making me cry.
It's all right. It's all right.
But your family hears things, sees things, and that's tough. And so, appreciate you all supporting. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Oh, and so, you all, you know, we've melted. You know, GRU, GRU, we've melted Sweetwater Wetlands Park because it's worthy to melt. It's such an incredible project, but we wanted to provide each of you a fracture of a picture from Sweetwater Wetlands Park. Because it is such a gem for our community, and you're all.
That's awesome. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. Adrian.
All right. We've done pretty well so far. Guys, we haven't broken down. Todd and I about had it going there, but it's coming.
If I might transition, we have a, I'd like to transition, Mr. Mayor. We have a video that we'd like to present. The Communications Department really went way out to make sure this was perfect for not only you, but, you know, Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Hayes-Santos, Commissioner Areola. And so, with that, we have a video presentation.
That's awesome. And in advance, thank you, guys, everyone that, I know how hard you worked on this, so I really appreciate it. You've been awesome for years, but thank you.
or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who was actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs, who comes short again and again. Because there is no effort without error and shortcoming. But who does actually strive to do the deeds? Who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions? Who spends himself in a worthy cause? Who, at the best, knows in the end the triumph of high achievement? And who, at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly? So that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory
It's incredible. Really good. Thanks, y'all. Thank you so much. That's wonderful.
Not over that time. But I think that, um, the quote, uh, that addresses my feelings for you and, um, where I think you stand is from Martin Luther King. And it's the ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenging controversy. And I think that really addresses the three of you very well. Well, actually the four of you very well. So I look forward to seeing you at the podium. And remember, three minutes only.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's very kind of you. And I, I will say it was one of the great joys that I actually got to serve with you on a commission. Uh, we've worked together and known each other for so long, um, on, on local issues. But to be able to actually serve with you on the days was amazing. Okay, um, then, uh, first, then we're, we're girls to our closing remarks. Cookies are, it happens soon. Uh, but we're going to start off with, um, Ms. Ganey, who's going to say some words for Commissioner Ward.
I will do my best to personify. First, my apologies for not being with you all this evening. As you know, I'm traveling for city business, but my heart is with you all at City Hall. Second, I want to take a moment to formally thank my neighbors in Gainesville's mighty second district for allowing me to represent you since two thousand and seventeen. It has been a privilege and an honor, and I want you to know how much I appreciate you. I will continue to work hard for you all and our neighbors as mayor. Third and most important, I want to express what an honor it has been to work with David, Adrian and Lauren these past five and a half years. I want everyone in our community to understand that these are men of the deepest integrity and character. Service on the city commission or any other government body is many things, but it is first and foremost a workplace. Since my first day on the job, the three of you have made it a very pleasant and joyful workplace for me and for this and so many other reasons, I appreciate you. I will treasure the work we have done together in both agreement and disagreement. And I look forward to being able to actually talk about city policy with you in the future. Please accept my best wishes in everything you do henceforth, and thank you for being such terrific colleagues. It has been an absolute pleasure.
All right, thank you. Well done, Ms. Ganey, and thank you, Harvey, for those kind words. Okay, up next we'll hear from Commissioner Ariola.
Well, as you can hear, it has taken five and a half years for my voice to finally give just a little, just a little, though. I just sound a little bit iller, that's okay. I, um, you know, I didn't, I didn't come in with a whole lot of prepared remarks, uh, as per usual. Uh, I like to speak from the heart, uh, and really, um, you know, speak from that place. Uh, this has really been the most formative experience of my life. I, I entered the youngest and I leave the youngest. But I, I really tried hard to get more young people interested in city government. The young people are the future of this city. And it was such an exciting thing to win. I, I remember sitting with you, Dylan, and I was telling you, there's no way I'm going to win. There's no way, even though the numbers are telling you the opposite. And I was so shocked, I didn't have a speech ready for the victory that day either. But honestly, the greatest joys in life are good surprises. Um, and it has been a good surprise, the city of Gainesville. The people who work in this city are some of the most tremendous people you'll ever meet. I want to thank the voters of District Three, uh, who took a chance on, uh, who was then a twenty-five-year-old out of college. Now I'm a much more aged thirty-one-years-old. And my degree is farther and farther in the rearview mirror. But I've replaced it with some really amazing experiences. Uh, but I couldn't have done this work alone, not even close. And that's the first thing you learn when you get into city government is that there's not a single thing you can do alone. Your voice is, is your own, your attendance is your own, but you can't do anything alone. And so I have to give first sincere, sincere thanks to my officers. I know everyone says our officers, but I often looked at you as my officers because I knew I had to rely on you. Anything that we did, I had to rely on you. And I've had many, many officers have come and gone. This team that, that has served with me now, you all have served me with incredible honor, incredible honor. You all have done work. I mean, in the middle of the year, we had a retreat where you all asked us, please no more work. And it was serious, it was very serious, and it is serious. I told you we couldn't do that because we had more work to get done. And there is still more work to get done. And I know you all are going to do it. I know it. It truly, uh, it truly humbles me. But you couldn't do your work without your staff. And I have to give a huge thanks to everyone who works for the city of Gainesville because without, without y'all, even just here in these meetings, running the broadcast booth, running the security, everyone makes this place work. Everyone makes this place tick. It wouldn't be the same without, without any of y'all. It really wouldn't. And I tell you, it is a, a, it was a humbling experience when I attended a retirement ceremony, one of the first retirement ceremonies I attended, uh, for a sergeant at GPD for about twenty years. Uh, he was, I believe, actually, I think it was a school resource officer. And seeing the devotion that somebody puts into a twenty-five-year career. It was humbling because I, you know, I was twenty-five. Um, and to see that, I just thought to myself, that's the standard. That's the standard. When you're willing to commit your life to a profession that is about protecting people, that is about making this city better, that it's about making this city safer, that's the standard. And I tried every day to live up to that type of a standard, even though term limits make sure you can't get twenty years on the city commission. But it really was amazing. Um, I want to thank my colleagues, all of them, starting with Goston, Bud, Warren, Simmons, Johnson, now Chestnut. Uh, and for my colleagues who aren't here, um, Commissioner Ward, you've been a fantastic colleague, Commissioner Sacco, Commissioner Desmond Walker. Uh, it hurts me that you're not here. I hope for your son, he dies, your colleagues are there for you. But I want you to know that I appreciate every time you voted on something that mattered for me. Because I couldn't do it alone. I couldn't do it alone, and I needed every commissioner. So thank you. Our advisory boards, your work does not go unnoticed. I know oftentimes it feels like the commission is making decisions independent, but you would better believe we look at what those advisory board votes were. We look to see how the UAB voted. We look to see how our, uh, nature commissions and all these other boards are giving their input. And what, what you give to the city is, is a humble public service that is, that is just so, so fantastic. Um, it is actually, one of the members of the advisory boards, when I first got on, um, who I can say, uh, I've had many folks mentor me over my life, teachers, uh, professors. But when I got into city government, uh, there was an individual who took me under his wing. Uh, and so I do want to give a special thanks to Darren Cook. Darren, you, your career speaks for itself, um, and for you to take, uh, take a guy like me under your wing is really special. I got to thank the folks at the University of Florida, uh, President Fox, Dr. Lane, Dr. Nelson, Mr. Jimenez. You all were the first, the first University of Florida leaderships to engage the city of Gainesville in meaningful leadership discussions. Uh, Mayor Poe, you had a huge part to play in that. But that's just getting started. What we're seeing now between the city and the university, it's only just beginning. And what it can become is really up to all of us. And we're so grateful for that relationship. I'm not going to forget to thank my family because it's my family that sustained me. Um, I have here a picture, uh, of my mother and father dancing. Uh, it's very popular in Mexican culture. You know, my, my parents, uh, they made me who I am today. Uh, politics in Mexico is very different, y'all. I don't want to go too much into it because it's actually not a very good situation. But I thank God every day that my parents had the courage to dream of moving to another country. I thank them every day for two brothers, my older brother Daniel, my younger brother Diego. We are so different, different in the best way. I know that I can call on y'all for anything. I can call on y'all on the best days, on the worst days, and I will get the best brothers I could ever ask for. I want to thank Danielle, our two thousand twenty-two Democratic nominee for Congress. Uh, you've been a blessing to me this year, uh, that I didn't expect. But you too have sustained me. Every effort that I've made this year, you've sustained me. And so I often wrestled with what I wanted to impart to the community, to the city. And I really settled on a few things. First, you know, when all is said and done, more is always said than done. So focus on what you're doing. What you say matters. Absolutely it does. What you do counts twice as much. And if you want to achieve something great, you do have to make sure first you have the capacity to do it. Can't just go out there first thing. No, you've got to build capacity. To the incoming commissioners, Casey and Brian, and Ed. Best quality you can have is perseverance. Because to make it day to day, meeting to meeting, when votes don't go your way, when there's a flip and you're not sure what's going on, you need to persevere. That's the only way we were able to make it through these last few years. That's how we made it through the pandemic. Nobody saw that coming. Nobody knew how or why or how long it was going to last. But this community came together. And as the, as the years go by, I will always remember how we protected each other. I will always remember that. Sure, we asked a lot. I specifically asked a lot. And I know I was asking much. This community responded, didn't always agree with the direction I wanted us to go. But people's safety was first. And we're going to figure out how to continue to pick back up. We're going to figure that out. I know it. There is such a thing as good. I am not a nihilist. I believe there is good in this world. It is worth pursuing. It is worth discovering. It is worth chasing with every fiber in your being. Because just as there is good in this world, there is evil in this world. I don't know how it stole away in here, but only we can push it out. Only we can do that. And you can only do it with good. How would I like to be remembered? I'd like you all to remember me as a time of day. Remember me when you're scared to speak. And you're afraid of what's going to come out. Remember me when you need courage to stand up for what you believe in. Remember me when you need to summon that passion to impart upon others. Remember me when you need to take responsibility, as we all must take responsibility up here. Remember me when you need kindness. That should be in abundance, and too often it is in scarcity. Remember me when you need leadership. Because there will be times when you have to be the one to provide leadership. Now, we took turns up here and I enjoyed that. I knew there were, there were issues where I could count on the commissioner to my left or the commissioner to my right, and I knew we could count on each other. So leadership doesn't have to be just on your shoulders, it can be a shared burden as well. Remember me at a time of day when you need some peace. Because I am at peace. I leave with no regrets. And I wish that for all of you. Because it is the most validating, liberating feeling I have felt in a very long time. I am also going to quote Vince Lombardi. As a Green Bay Packers fan, I've got plenty of him. He used to say all the time, we are going to chase perfection and we are going to catch excellence in the process. So I believe we did that. And I am so grateful to all, to all of you. This city has a bright future. It definitely does. I don't know where that future goes always, sometimes it's beyond your vision, but it's bright. I mean, we've just had, I mean, we've just had some amazing, amazing things happen in the last few years. And I can tell that Gainesville has really come into its own. It really has. Uh, we're lucky to live in such a good community. And I am lucky to have had such great colleagues. Adrian, I think more than anybody, you challenged me to raise my policy game all the time. You were bringing stuff to the table that I, you know, frankly, had never heard of. Thank you for that. You inspired me to be a better commissioner, and I believe by the end of my term I was. Mr. Mayor. I don't know that I have words to really encapsulate the kind of role model that you've been for me. But what I can say is that every single time it got tough as a commissioner, I knew that mayor's seat was rock solid. I knew that mayor's seat was going to be a strong and immovable an object. And you know what? There were some votes where maybe I wished there was a little bit more movement, but honestly, that was so few and far between. It was so few and far between. And at the end of the day, I'm just glad I gained a friend. But to have served under your leadership was, uh, was a true honor. And especially during the times of the pandemic, it was a, a great relief to me, and I'm sure many others. Harvey's not here. Harvey, you gave me a run for my money. It was a thick race, let me just say that. We were in it. I don't like to lose, but if I have to, I would rather lose with honor, with integrity, and I would rather lose to someone whose hand I can shake at the end of the race. I don't know that I have words to really encapsulate the kind of role model that you've been for me. But what I can say is that every single time it got tough as a commissioner, I knew that mayor's seat was rock solid. I knew that mayor's seat was going to be a strong and immovable an object. And you know what? There were some votes where maybe I wish there was a little bit more movement. But honestly, that was so few and far between. It was so few and far between. And at the end of the day, I'm just glad I gained a friend. But to have served under your leadership was, was a true honor. And especially during the times of the pandemic. It was a, a great relief to me and I'm sure many others. Harvey's not here. Harvey, you gave me a run for my money. It was a thick race. Let me just say that. We were in it. I don't like to lose. But if I have to, I would rather lose with honor, with integrity. And I would rather lose to someone whose hand I can shake at the end of the race. So I wish you well. I wish you luck. You've got some good commissioners coming onboard. They know the standard. They know how high the bar was set. I can't wait to see y'all, John. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Ariola and Commissioner Santos. I guess you get to follow that.
Always been the great.
How do you say it again?
Orator, orator. Always. It's a, it's been an honor serving as your Gainesville City Commissioner for District Four for the past six and a half years. I grew up in Gainesville. I love it. I love it here. I love our city. Ever since I moved here when I was five, I've, I've tried to make our city a better place. From standing up to my third grade principal to, and got suspended for advocating for freedoms in our constitution to volunteering as a youth soccer coach my first year at college. But I've always been drawn to local government. I started serving on city advisory boards when I was 18 and continued serving on those boards until I was elected to office. I've always had a love for local government. From watching and following city commission meetings in high school, I, I saw, I mean, I saw you and, and others that I saw the local, that there is real positive change to be made to our community and a better place at the local level. And I think that's why I moved in the direction I did. Gainesville is not the same as it was when I moved here in 1990. It wasn't the same city that I, when I was elected here. I think we have a better city today than when I grew up here. We have a more vibrant and diverse city, a safer city, a greener city, a more fun city. Cities change and they should change. Cities that don't change with the times wither away. And that's why I love our city, because we fight against the current of stagnation. And there is a constant, consistent push for Gainesville to be a better city for the future. We have to look at who we are today and where we're going. We are not a small, little college town anymore. Those days have passed. We've grown up and we have to start acting that way. We will continue to have issues that grow and get worse unless we start addressing the issues, not like a small town, but a real city. People are moving here and we have to be ready for that. We need to ensure the solutions we implement are not just plugging short-term holes, but are actually finding the solutions to solve the issues in the long term. The solutions we come up with of this commission and in future commissions have, have to plan to solve the future issues that will confront us 20, 30, 40 years from now. If not, we are failing our future generations. There may be hard decisions that will get pushed back, but we as a community have to be strong and do what's best for the city in the long term and our future generations. Not just listening to the loudest people in the room who don't want to give up anything they have for our future generations. I'm proud to say that the solutions I focused on and have geared towards, have been geared towards our future. I, I have been the, the policy nerd on, on the commission, I think. The commissions I've served over the past six years have passed, I believe, more substantial progressive policies than any other commission in our city's history. It was honored in, in 2018 when I won the statewide Sierra Club award for extraordinary effort by a governmental person to promote and effect change in a policy on, on policy or practice to protect or preserve Florida's environment for my work on the zero waste measures. The policies we, we adopted have been policies focused on, on, on 30 years from now, on finding solutions and putting us on a path for that. We focused on big issues like housing, public safety, transportation, our environment, among many others. I'm proud to say that we passed transformational projects. Like when we legalized missing middle housing so that our young and working families can live where they want to live in our city and aren't forced to live outside the city limits. Ending parking mandates citywide that will substantially reduce the cost for businesses and make housing more affordable. Passing the most progressive in the Southeast United States solid waste ordinance by passing the comprehensive zero waste ordinance and setting up a path for the city to be zero waste by 2040. Setting a path for the city to be 100% renewable energy by 2045. Passing the most progressive rental housing ordinance in the Southeast United States, again, that will end slum housing in our community and ensure that everyone in our community that rents has a house that's healthy and safe. We sued the state of Florida to fight for local common sense gun legislation. And that's still going on in, in front of the state Supreme Court right now. Giving the people in our, in our community a voice in how our charter is crafted by putting forward a charter review commission. And thank you, Commissioner Chestnut, for serving on that. We passed Form Based Code, our second year in office, and Mayor and I came at the same time. So it's easier to create housing and easier to, to build in our city and be ready for the future. We ended prison labor. We mandated bike infrastructure, making sidewalks wider, setbacks, to ensure that we are on a path for Vision Zero so that no one dies on our roads and on a serious injury. That's one of the hardest things that happens when someone dies on our roads with serious injuries. Because it means that we usually fail as a government in trying, and we could have done better. And we have to do better. And we can. Working on criminal justice reform to reduce the number of people who get arrested and stay out of criminal justice system. We've made substantial changes in that. That's kind of hasn't really been talked about too much, but we did a lot there. And thank you, Ms. Curry. I think you, you came on to help with work on that as well before you were City Manager. Those are just a few of the transformational progressive policies we have passed to make our city better for everyone. And not just today, but for our future. And I'm proud of the work that we've done. I want to thank every single person who worked at the city while I've been on the commission. Those who've had the pleasure of working closely and called many times, our charter officers, thank you. I know I've pushed you very hard and over and over and over and over again, but I, I did it because I thought you could do it. And I thought the city needed it and we had a, a path forward. And you all rose to the occasion and I thank you that. Our staff, who have, over the years, have helped actually implement these things and pushed them forward and ran our city. Our city is nothing without the, the thousands of people who work every day to make our city a better pla, a better place. And also just the normal things from picking up trash on the street to ensuring the lights are on, to making sure we have water that's right here every day. Thank you all. I truly, truly do appreciate you. I want to thank the commissioners that I've, I've served with on the commission. It has been truly a pleasure and an honor. From the ones that aren't here now to the ones that are here today. Commissioner Chestnut, it's been seeing as a little kid, I saw you serving and then things like that when I was, I was reading about legislature and things like that. So thank you. It's really has been an honor serving with you and I've learned a lot from you over the last eight months. I, I thought it was a couple of years when we were eating dinner, saying. I, I truly appreciate serving with you. David, it's, it's been an honor. I mean, it's been five and a half years of, of us pushing and going and not stopping and pushing and pushing. And we got a lot of stuff done. And the city has a better place for it. And I appreciate every single thing you've done. Mayor Poe, we became in together, ran, ran together twice. I truly do appreciate you. I remember coming into your office in those early days when people were yelling at us and saying horrible things about me. And asked how you did it because you've, you've done it for many years before that. And you gave incredible advice that helped me persevere through those times. And I think some other people mentioned you're steady, you've been a steady push for on this commission. Not just in pushing forward policy, but making sure that our commission stays together and moves forward. I truly do appreciate the leadership that you have had in our city. And you've, you've led us over a, a time that had great highs and, and great lows and amazing work that you did through COVID. And I, I still can't believe that we were in a state emergency for two years. And then I didn't think that we would be voting on things like that. It was unbelievable and still is unbelievable. But you, you persevered and, I mean, we had white nationalists here and you did, I, I, thank you. Every single time you rose to the occasion and I appreciate that. Commissioner Ward. He's off at the White House. And thank you. It has been an honor to, to serve with you as well. I mean, you, you helped push, you were, you were a leader on this commission. And I'm truly excited to, to have you as the, the mayor-elect and the next mayor. And I think you will, you will lead our city well. I want to thank our, our community members who, who put their faith in me to represent the city. I feel like I've worked diligently to follow my campaign promises to put forward transformational progressive policies to solve our city's problems and to set our city on a better path. But I truly do thank our neighbors in our community. You have, you have an amazing group of people here from all over the world who have lived here for a day, who have lived here for generations. We have a great people here. I also want to thank my, my friends and family, especially my mother. You all have always been there for me through tough times. I, I couldn't have done it without you. Thank you. I wish the best for the next city commission. The next, oh, you're not here, sorry. Commissioner-elect Willetts and Commissioner-elect Eastman. I, and Commissioner Chestnut. The next city commission will have tougher decisions over the coming months and years. But I know that you will do the right things. You, you are true believers in doing the right things for, for today and for our future generations. I want to offer my help in, in any way. I, I'm here for you. When you are successful, the city is successful. And I want to help make sure that, that happens. I also want to say the District Four is in good hands with Commissioner-elect Eastman. Thank you for stepping up and helping to lead our city in the future. I very much appreciate it. The city's in good hands. Finally, I was talking to Bob Karp last night about kind of the speech and what to say. And he kind of left some, some parting words of, that I, I should kind of leave off on. Anything worth doing is going to be difficult, but you should still do it. Thank you so much.
All right, girls. Now I said when I got, when I gave my comments, it was almost done and then cookies. All right, so here I'm giving my comments. So little known to just about everybody out there, the mayor has very few actual powers. In fact, we have less power than the commissioners. We can't make a motion. We can't second a motion. We're really just a, a guy with a little hammer up there in the middle of the, middle of the dais. But one of the things that we are empowered by, by our charter is the power to issue proclamations. And so I'm going to issue, this is where it gets tough. I'm going to issue my final proclamation as mayor. So I'd like my family to please join me. Thank you. This is our new communications director. She is all over. Okay. Whereas the families of elected officials, especially spouses, children and partners, assume a significant and often hidden burden during that official's term in office. And whereas Emily Monda Poe, Elizabeth Poe and Beatrice Poe, and also Cheryl Poe, have provided incredible emotional, physical and logistical support during my term in office as a city commissioner and mayor. And whereas the demands on the job in terms of the time away from the family, emotional and physical toll, and the associated stress involved with the duties of elected office are often borne by those closest to the elected official. And whereas Emily Monda Poe, Elizabeth Poe and Beatrice Poe have displayed incredible support, encouragement and compassion during my more than 12 years in public office. And whereas it is important to thank all of the families of our public officials for their support and dedication during the late nights, long meetings, subtle and not so subtle threats, times of joy and community celebration, and during times of collective tragedy. We could not do this without you. Now therefore, I, Lauren Poe, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim December 15th, 2022, as Emily Monda Poe, Elizabeth Poe and Beatrice Poe Day in the city of Gainesville, and invite all of our neighbors to join me in thanking all of the spouses, partners and extended families of all elected officials for the sacrifice, support and dedication. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Gainesville, Florida this 12th day of December, 2022. This is 100% Beatrice right here. All y'all been hearing stories about her all these years. I talk about you all the time, sweetie. You're getting, you're getting the full dose right here. Oh, boy. All right, y'all, I cannot believe we are at this moment. I, I didn't know what I was doing or what I was getting into in 2008. I didn't. Some people approached me and thought, hey, you might be a good candidate for city commission. And I said, really? Okay, we'll give it a try. And, and here we are, you know, almost a decade and a half later. So I'm just humbled to be here at this, at this moment in, in my life and, and the life of the city. So I want to, first of all, of course, thank my mom. She's been there the whole time. In fact, my first campaign was run out of her little condo. We didn't know what we were doing. We had like a shabby, shabby printer. She was the volunteer coordinator, the male person. I mean, we did, and somehow we won an election. And, and she's been there every step of the way ever since. And then I know my mom and Allison are so, so similar. Whenever we've had a bad day, whenever we've just gotten it thick and, you know, gotten beat up bad, we'll get texts from mom both. And we share them, like, look what my mom said and say, oh yeah, well, my mom said the same. And it's just so kind and reassuring and, you know, every son, you can't do better than the love of a mother. So thank you so much, mom. I want to thank all of my friends, so many of whom I've lost connection and contact with over all these years. This job is so demanding. And I hope that you'll have me back. I hope that we can reconnect and reestablish our, our friendships because I miss them terribly. I want to thank the 24 charter officers I've worked with since 2008. 24. I said 22 city commissioners. The attorney says 23. I'm going to defer to the attorney on that. Take my, take the legal advice of the attorney and, and agree that it's 23 city commissioners and three mayors. I believe you. But I'm going to keep that to public record. Three, three mayors, all of whom I learned a tremendous amount from as I tried to figure out how to be a mayor myself. And thousands of community builders. Every one of you, I love you dearly. I respect and appreciate the work you did. Whether you were raising it in my eyebrow or raising something else in my direction because we disagreed on something. I always cared about you, respected you and, and respected the amazing, tremendous work you do day in and day out for our city. Commissioner Ariola referred to it earlier, but nobody does anything by themselves in this organization. From the very simple fact that it takes three other votes on this dais to pass anything, to needing to build community support, to needing to work with a wide variety of, of folks to get to yes. It can feel like an island at times in this position. But it's all about everyone else but yourself. So I want to thank all of those folks who, who helped accomplish what we've been able to accomplish. And I thank Commissioner Santos so much for taking us through the partial list of that. I want to thank all of the executive assistants who keep the commission running. I mean, it's just amazing the work that they do under the, the leadership of the clerk. Who's calling me in the middle of my speech? I mean, come on. But I especially want to thank Betsy. Betsy and I met before we even knew what the future held. I taught her daughter in my second year at Fort Clark Middle School, my second year of teaching. And Betsy And Betsy and her very best friend Katie Dolem, who is the daughter of the late Corey Dolem, who died in the line of duty with GPD in a tragic accident. They were the two best chums, and they were inseparable at school, and they were great students and you know, just an incredible pleasure to teach, and that's how I met Betsy. And then so many years later, she comes over to work in the commission's office, and we reconnected, and she has been absolutely a right-hand appendage to me. I could not have done any of the work that I did without Betsy's support. We just connected in a way that allowed me to do my job, and Betsy, I'm so thankful for you, and I think you're going to probably be one of the things I missed most when I leave office. So I'd served two terms on the commission and made a conscious decision to not seek a second term as an at-large city commissioner in order to run for mayor. And I did that with a lot of deliberation and thought, but did it for only one reason, because I wanted to take head-on the inequities that existed in our city that I felt were going unaddressed under the current leadership. And so I didn't run because I wanted to cut ribbons and go to banquets. In fact, anybody that knows me knows those are not the favorite parts of the job for me. I wanted to face head-on the major challenges of our community. And so, once the voters granted me entry into the arena, there was only one way that I was going to leave, and that was covered in blood and dust. And that is exactly how I feel like I'm exiting the arena. And I'm proud to have done it. Whether we tackled issues of housing, transportation equity, energy, and environmental policy, we, as a commission, took on the biggest, most difficult, most complicated challenges our community faces and tried to move the dial as much as we possibly could or bend the arc. And so I'm proud of the work we did, and I was under no illusion as I came in that we would finish our work in six years. But what I do believe we've done is gotten our city to a point where there's no going back, where we will continue to address and wrestle with these big issues until we have achieved full equity in our community. In order to take on those big challenges, I centered myself, my leadership and my daily life, on three basic principles, and you've heard them before. I didn't make them up myself. The first is faith. The belief in things known but unseen and unprovable. You have to have faith in your community. You have to have faith in your colleagues. And you have to have faith in yourself, that the work can be done. That when you call, people will answer. So whether it was having faith in the community when answering major challenges like Irma, Ian, and Charlie, or answering challenges like white supremacists coming to absolutely tear down our community, or COVID, or a reckoning with racial justice that we hadn't seen in a generation. Because I was centered on faith and that I had faith in our community, we not only made it through those difficult and challenging times, we came out better than when we entered, and I'm so thankful for our community for that. I also centered myself on hope. It is easy to lose hope in these positions, and we have seen it happen. You have got to believe that things will get better tomorrow, next week, and for the next generation. And so much of the work we did on this commission together focused on giving hope to people. Being one of the first cities in Florida to institute a move towards a living wage, ending prison labor, providing family leave for our employees. The Fair Chance Hiring Ordinance, which was the last ordinance we got to pass as city commissioners today, and you should have seen the faces and the expressions of the folks out there. Incredible. Mayors for Guaranteed Income, one of the gentlemen that was with us earlier today as a recipient of the Mayors for Guaranteed Income pilot and was just telling me how it absolutely changed his life. He was exiting prison, had no idea what he was going to do, and he was hopeless. And he got accepted into that program, and he had hope, and now because of that program and that chance, his life is completely different than it would have otherwise been. We gave hope for the environment, for renewable energy, for people wanting to escape car dependency, for people trying to find a fair price for a decent house, or people just looking to get out and enjoy their city and their parks and other amenities. We tried to give people hope. And finally, I centered myself on love. And I want to tell all of you, because some people have asked me, how do you do it? How do you sit there and take the abuse? And it is, it's abusive behavior. Sometimes, not y'all. Well, one of y'all was. That's all right. I imagine them being enshrouded in a cloak of love as they are standing there saying the nastiest, meanest, misveterial things in the world. That it encompasses them and passes through them and lights them so that at one point they may find joy and they may find peace. Love is the force that binds us all. Love is the force that binds the universe together. And so if we lead with kindness and we manifest love in an outward fashion towards everybody else, it allows for that faith and that hope to become embedded in every action that we take. So there's another parable. And Jesus is with some of his disciples, and you all know this story. As they say, I think, preaching to the converted. Maybe not Beatrice. You know this story too. I know you do. She's got her little children's animated Bible. Meet me on the other side. And the disciples are scared, and they have little faith. They love Jesus, but they have little faith. And they say, there's storms coming. Shouldn't we just go around? He goes, no, just get in the boat and just meet me on the other side. And they get out, and the storm comes up, and Jesus is sleeping at the back of the boat. And the disciples believe that Jesus has abandoned them, and he's going to let them die. And they wake him, and he's like, why are you waking me up? I told you. Just meet me on the other side. We're going to be fine. And of course, they were, and Bishop Stokes, who I was lucky enough to bump into in the back yesterday, said he'd just been talking about that this past Sunday. Because you know what that means, is that when you're in the middle of the worst part of the storm, you're more than halfway there. So keep going. You've already gotten through the hardest part, and nothing that you accomplish allows you a path but through that storm. And so we've been through that storm over and over. And you go through it enough, you know that you're going to get to the other side. But you have to have that faith. And so for the next commission, I'm rooting for you. I hope you do great things. To use a soccer analogy, as we're sort of getting near the final of the World Cup, don't be afraid of the ball. Have confidence. Play as if you belong there and do great work. You have all of the skills and gifts that you need. All you need to do is execute now. So I'm going to end with just a little bit of perspective here. Because we get embroiled in our local sort of arena, and everything becomes a fight to the, you know, there's winners and losers, and we get so consumed that we forget that we're a tiny piece of a much larger world. So there's some, almost 300 national governments in the world all fighting for these issues and and working on their solutions for their people and what they think is best. In the United States, we have 50 state governments that are all fighting over those issues and doing what they think is best for their people. In Florida, we have 67 county governments that are all doing what they think is best and creating their own policies. In Latchua County, we have nine municipal governments. We have two water management districts. We've got an airport governing board. We've got a library governing board, all fighting and doing the good work for the people, and all of it's important. But if we zoom out even further than that, our universe has been around for 13.8 billion years. 13.8 billion years. We've been swirling around there with the dust of stars. More stars in this universe than grains of sand. I'm sorry, more stars in our galaxy than grains of sand on the Earth. Almost every one of those stars has a planet circling around it. Many of those stars have planets very similar to Earth circling around it. We are small. There are two trillion galaxies in our planet. Two trillion galaxies. Imagine the civilizations that have risen and fallen while we have been arguing over our little scrap of dust. There are 4,800 stars born every second, offering new hope of new civilization at some point in the future for a place that we haven't even seen yet. 1,800 stars die every minute. Civilizations gone that we'll never see or know anything about. And 95% of all the stars that will ever be born in our universe have already been born. So I say that to say it's okay to like take a breath and chill out. Right? We are tiny. We are a speck. And while it's important to stand up for values and beliefs that you feel strongly about, it's also okay to take a breath and step back because we are one tiny insignificant part of a vast and glorious universe. And I am just thankful and fortunate that I got to live at all. Today was not promised, but it was given. And if we're lucky enough to have tomorrow, then we'll get to get up and try again and do the same thing. And we are all so blessed to have that opportunity. It's been such an honor, Gainesville. I can't imagine what my last 14 years would have been like had you not given me this opportunity, had you not granted me keys to the arena. I'm glad to have the blood and the dust on my shoulders as I exit. And so I have just one more promise for all of you, Gainesville. I'm never ever going to give you up. I'm never going to let you down. I'm never going to run around or desert you. I'm never going to make you cry. I'm never going to say goodbye. I'm never going to tell a lie or hurt you. So for the very last time, as your mayor, Madam Clerk, I declare this meeting adjourned.